Why do you remember that? That's what for the view.
Uh, you want to present? Um, yeah, so, uh, where's your slideshows?
Just open them. Which is for me. I think because it came as a new one, I think so.
Oh, it's a PDF. So just, that's okay, just click on the PDF.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we can show this here. Um, this came from the M A S C, Mike Dilbert. So, I'll go through it very quickly. There are a number of slides. Uh, roll of the chairs to move issues, no problematic procedure, policy leadership, collaborate with the superintendent, understand the issues before vote, uphold laws, um, both court of ethics. Um, identify roles and responsibilities of members, remain aware of the dynamics, prepare effective meetings, uh, manage meeting time and board priorities, and lead committee in annual goal assessment, align board work with school goals, district goals. Um, also to know policy, power to set direction for the school, bring about prudent action by administrative staff, and define what should be done. I'm just gonna go through these and, and just highlight and try to get through it. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Just let me see it. Foster stability and continuity, keep people informed, clarify school superintendent relations, uh, save the super- what can I say?
Selfdestroy.
Save superintendent time and effort, mm-hmm, allow for more efficient school operation. Update policies every three to five years. We have a, a tendency to have policy, um, subcommittee sort of usually. Separate policy from administrative procedure, uh, that's been ongoing for the time that I've been here. Um, I don't know why we have different colored pages, et cetera. I think that was recommendations maybe. Provide future-focused direction, lead strategic and action planning, uh, to local, state, national priorities. Uh, involve staff and community, more community with staff, and I think that goes back to working with the superintendent. Promote high achievement for all students, and clarify standards, uh, state expectations, academic and social skills, and most importantly, create an environment for high-level learning and identify benchmarks. Uh, also to be aware of assessment, uh, to be knowledgeable, base decisions on those results, use to improve services, and most importantly, ask the right questions. And that goes with accountability, um, for student performance, success, uh, reporting school and community achievement, evaluate the performance, and correct any deficiencies. To align standards to school priorities, link resources, ensure instruction, performance targets, and walk the talk. Uh, climate and culture, respect civility and no bullying, open communication, um, know how parents and community need the school, that will pulse on that. Has powerful influence on behavior and focus on high-quality learning, uh, collaborative, uh, teamwork. Continuous improvement. Um, please action plan with the committee administrative annual work. Some of these seem a little redundant to me. Combine technology, action, uh, leadership team, uh, connect the school and the districts. Uh, focus the meetings on key work, delegate meeting time management to other committee members, facilitate agenda discussion, and manage contin- uh, contingent contentious issues. Summarize ideas, engage in all committee members, restrict dominating individuals, and help reach common ground decisions. Uh, problematic procedure, one person speak at a time, introduce speakers and meeting guests. I'm tired already. Pre-plan meetings and anticipate problems, speak in ways everyone understands, present info with PowerPoint slides, model proactive behavior. Uh, consider all opinions and feedback, uh, focus on student work while being, uh, turn feedback into open-ended questions, that's important. Um, redirect non-agenda items to the next meeting, continue to restate ag- agenda items until a decision is made, insist on following the code of ethics, use humor and empathy fast to manage contentious issues. And governance, the impact on student achievement, obviously we want high, and work on governance. Robert's rule for small committees, I don't think we wanna go there. I think that's something a little bit different. Um, I think we're going out into a different direction here. Uh, that's more a subcommittee. So, thank you.
Thank you, Louise, I appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing me in. So, first item on the agenda is the appointment of a new chairperson. Do I hear a motion to open nominations for selecting a new chair, chairperson?
So, motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a mo- do I hear a motion to, um, canonization? Uh, motion, but do I hear a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Aye.
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 Do I hear a nomination for chair?
I'd like to nominate Ellen Marr as chair.
Second, I hear a second. Uh, in favor, roll call please. Is it a roll call?
I'm gonna abstain.
I don't think it's a roll call, it's just a vote. Roll call.
Uh, we've got a second, right?
Yes, Ashley.
I can second.
Ashley. And I guess it, is it a roll call, Ellen?
It is a roll.
Yeah, roll call. So, you abstain. Okay.
Aye, Craig McCallum.
Aye, Ashley Cleary.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Hi, Jen Madden.
So moved. I had to do that just once, just once.
We did it very good.
And so I turn the, thank you. Um, majority vote, could it say aye, any close, one abstained, and a new chairperson will get voted on.
Thank you, thank you for the nomination. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Hope I can live up to, uh, the standards that the committee has enjoyed over the years, many years of excellent, excellent chair people.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
In one for first tasks.
Awesome. Okay, um, Louise, thank you for conducting that, and at this point, we will all stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, do we have any public comment? Nope. Okay. Approval of the warrant. Do you have a warrant, Louise?
I do.
So for our new members, the warrant is the, um, reconciliation of all the expenses over the last two weeks. Um, I was in the last couple of days and we threw all of the invoices, and they're open to, everybody can come in and look at them on a Monday, Tuesday prior to the meeting, um, and look at the invoices. They can't leave the business office. If you have questions, uh, if Michael's there, you know, feel free, feel free to ask him. Um, so this is perfunctory, but because it's budgeted, we do have to vote on it. So, can I have a motion to approve warrant nineteen dash twenty S?
So.
Uh.
I think Craig's done it.
Okay, Craig's got it. And a second?
Second.
Roll call please, all in favor?
Aye, Paul Kearney. Aye, Craig McCallum.
Aye, Ashley Cleary.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Hi, Jen Madden.
Okay, thank you. And then we all sign it. And typically what we do is just pass it around during the course of the meeting. If you wanted to peruse it quickly, you're welcome to do that. Now, we have the superintendents report.
Thank you, manager. Um, because, um, Mrs. Humphrey is meeting, oh, there you are. I was gonna, I had my little note, like, maybe late. She's not late, she's right here. Uh, we have, uh, Laura Humphrey who would like to present information on, uh, possibility, uh, for travel to both the Thailand elephant conservation trip in two thousand twenty and the Fiji service and exploration trip in April two thousand twenty-one. So if you would bring up another chair and your guest, uh, I would agree to the guests.
Hi.
Hi, well, congratulations, Ellen.
Thanks.
This is Serena Glenn from Rustic Pathways.
Hi.
Thanks for having me. And as, you know, I know some of you know and some of you don't know, I was here two years ago requesting permission to go on two trips, which we had a wonderful time on. We went to Belize, which we've been to, this was our third time going there, and we just went to Machu Picchu in Peru in April, and it was amazing. We, I took thirty kids to each adventure, immersive adventure-based, or experience-based travel is what we were doing, and that's what these two itineraries are as well. So one is for, in the way that we pick the groups, I mean, I, I think I'd like to go to Fiji 'cause I watch Survivor and they're always in Fiji, so that sounds like fun. But I can't say that Thailand is a place that I personally would have, you know, been at the top of my list, but always I leave it to the kids, and so the, the girls who are juniors who came on the trip and they recruited two boys and they met in my classroom at lunchtime, like, over a two-week period, went through everything, and this was their number one trip. So they're gonna be seniors next year. And then the sophomores, there was a group of like twenty-five kids there who met in my room, and they're the ones who picked Fiji. So that's where the choo- the choices come from of the location. But then the choosing of the partner is my doing, and, um, I chose Rustic Pathways because it really is, a lot of the times, um, I'll let Serena talk a little bit more about organization, so I don't wanna do that, but as a teacher choosing a trip, a lot of tri- trips are very tour-based. And I've been on some EF tours, you know, I went on Willis's trip years and years ago, and I had a wonderful time, but it wasn't the kind of experience that I've brought to you before. And so I'm always looking for somebody who has that kind of immersive and yet still safe and grounded with true partners on the location. Immersive, um, e- experience-based travel for the kids, and I think that Rustic Pathways is a great link, and I'm really, really excited to work with them for the first time. So I'll let Serena say whatever, you know.
We're excited too.
Whatever she would like, and she can answer questions, I can answer questions.
Sure. Yeah, just to give you a, maybe a little background of our company, um, 'cause we've actually been around for quite a while, thirty-five years now. Um, and it's funny 'cause the two places that the students have chosen are, um, places that we've been in the longest. So in Fiji, we've actually operated there for thirty years now. Um, and in Southeast Asia specifically, in Thailand, we've been there for over twenty years. Um, and so I think that's, these two also have partnerships in those locations. So in every place that we, um, operate in, we work with local vendors, local communities, and we sustain those partnerships and relationships. So when we're talking about service or we're talking about, um, immersive experiences, um, we are very intentional of how we do that and, um, how we bring students into these spaces. Um, throughout our programs, we do reflections with the students. We're talking them through about what it means to be a responsible traveler, what it means to be, um, a global citizen, and so we're having that conversation throughout, uh, the program. Um, specifically, these ones talks about, you know, elephant conservation, but we're speaking more also about what it means, um, as, and our role of conservation, um, in, uh, the environment, and especially now, we just saw the U N come out with, um, this report of over a thousand species are endangered, and we speak about these kinds of themes on the program. Um, we align our service with the U N's sustainability goals, which we're really proud of, and, um, have joined the coalition. And so we talk about how students can take these experiences and continue them when they come home. Um, and, you know, in terms of exactly controlled, safe environment is our number one, um, priority when we do these trips. Again, with our longstanding partnerships in these, um, countries, uh, we have built up a really secure environment for the students. So we have full, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, stuff, living there, both local and international, and we have, uh, a safety team specific to each country, and they often run drills in, you know, different kinds of scenarios. Um, and we partner with international SOS as well in terms of any kind of evacuation, um, uh, scenarios that are needed, and students are automatically enrolled in that when they join our programs. Aye.
I did reach out to five references who all said how amazing the, their experience was with Rustic Pathways. And three of the five people that I talked to said, you know, they were teachers like me who've run trips through all sorts of different vendors, and since they ran their first trip with Rustic Pathways, they haven't gone with anybody else. So I mean, that would be a big relief for me if I just had one catalog to pick from for the future, but, um, I hope it works out, yeah. What, another thing I liked about them particularly in going to places that, you know, I don't know that much about, but that's my favorite thing about the trip, is to read all about it and watch movies about it and read books about that. That's what I love about vacations anyways. Almost I love it more than when I actually get on the trip, is the planning part. But, um, I don't know a lot about them now, so one thing I also liked about Rustic Pathways that Serena didn't mention is that both in Thailand and in Fiji, they own their own lodge, which is the same thing that happened when we went to Belize. And I really liked that feeling, instead of going from hotel to hotel, of just being in one place with it being just us and the staff and going to breakfast, going to lunch, seeing the same ladies make our food three meals a day. I really enjoyed that, and I thought that was very impactful on the kids too. So, um, that was another thing that I liked about them and these two trips in particular.
Other questions, Jen?
Um, yeah, I have, I had a couple of questions. Um, so, just so I'm clear, um, it would be Fiji for twenty twenty-one, is that right?
Yeah, is this two thousand nineteen? I always get confused about the year.
Oh, no, no.
So this is two thousand nineteen, so next year, twenty twenty, would be Thailand, and then twenty twenty-one, the following year, would be Fiji, yes.
Got it. Now, on your past trips, you were doing some sort of environmental work. Is this sort of similar to that?
Um, this year, when we went to Peru, we didn't do any type of volunteer work or environmental work. But in the, both of these trips, that involved some volunteer work and some particularly environmentally focused work. So yes, we've liked it in the past. We did that in Costa Rica, we do that when we go to Belize, but we do more, uh, I guess it could be called environmental, but more ocean-based research. We collect data for the National Geographic when we're there.
And how much interest do you have so far, right now? Do you think that you'll?
I'm concerned that we'll have too many kids, and so we've already started talking about what's gonna happen if that happens.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask for clarity? We don't have the dates of the trips, we have the years, so.
Oh, it's April vacation. Both are April vacation.
And does it include any of the school dates on the year?
One day Friday for both trips. So we would leave Thursday night, nobody would miss school on Thursday, and we would come back on Sunday, nobody should miss school on Monday.
Does that include any of the holidays? Do, is this in the Easter, is it Orthodox or?
I don't know. I don't, I didn't look and see if it was Easter, 'cause you know on the school calendar, it doesn't say Easter, so I looked at the dates, but I'm not sure.
Do we have a twenty twenty, is that by twenty-one calendar?
Yeah, that's up there. That's on the, that's on the website.
You don't have a twenty-one calendar, uh.
Not the twenty-one, but the twenty-twenty's up there.
Yeah, we have twenty-twenty.
Yeah.
I always forget.
That's why I could only give Serena the dates for next year, not for the following year. I don't know if Easter's there. It seems like you guys seem to pick the April vacation to overlap with Easter, so probably. Um, this year it was at the end. Remember the year before, Louise, it was at the beginning, so some years it's different.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know if you say a consideration that the committee has to have if it includes a religious holiday, that's my concern.
Yeah, I don't know. We've done that before. It's been at the beginning and the end, yeah.
I, I. I just think we need to know, that's important.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's April twenty-first next year?
That's when Easter is, or the vacation?
That's not, that's when Easter.
No, that's a, that's a Tuesday.
That's the end.
Well, that's not a, a mess.
The fall. Let's see.
What's up?
I don't have one. Well, well, I, I think to Laura's point, we, we've, we've approved trips for April vacation every single year, whether it's an eighth grade trip
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
or the Euro trip or whatever trip, and Easter tends to fall either the first or, or the other one.
Right. Sometimes in there, sometimes at there. This year we got home at noon on Easter Sunday.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's a family decision whether, whether or not, um, someone is gonna go.
Yeah.
Um.
Easter in twenty twenty, or twelve? That's twenty, twenty doesn't affect any.
Well, yeah, oh, Easter's on the twelfth, so that's the week before, the week before, so it's.
Before.
Yeah, Easter's on the twelfth, so, um, the vacation actually is Monday through Friday, twenty-fourth.
It's April fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah. When I went on Willis's trip to Turkey and Greece, we were in, um, the Greek islands, on that island, oh my gosh, I can't believe I don't remember the name, but this is what is happening to my brain.
Is it Greece?
No, um, it's a really, no, it's a really small island that's famous for its Greek Orthodox Easter, and we were there on Easter. And it was the coolest thing, 'cause they let us stay until one in the morning, and at midnight during the day, you walk through the churches, and they've laid, I don't know, scented plants like lavender and, I don't know what they all were, on the floors, and everyone's walking on them, and it smells like the most unbelievable thing you've ever smelled. And then at night, they have the parade, and they have all candles lit with all this stuff on the floor still. And so you'd think it'd be a hazard, but no one seems to be concerned about that, but that makes the smell even stronger. It was really magical to be there on a holiday. And, um, we have this cool video, Paul can probably pass it around and show you guys. We got stuck in a restaurant in Cusco, Peru on their, um, Greek Ortho- their holy week celebration on Friday night. We went to have dinner and then we couldn't leave because literally in the video, there's hundreds of thousands of people in the square waiting for the parade to come. So we had to wait there, and they had these two balconies, and we took turns, six people going out on the balcony to watch, ten minutes, and then we came back in, six were kids went out on the balcony to watch. It was super cool. So being someplace else for these very holy weeks, what is pretty cool and exciting as well.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, um, I just, I mean, these experiences are enormously valuable, and, uh, I think we're so wonderfully lucky to, to have someone that's willing to do this, and I just, for my own edification perhaps, I, I just wonder, um, your organization's very aptly named in that, you know, these two destinations are very rustic. I wonder what, in those situations where you're in, um, environments like that, what, what's done in the case of like a medical emergency?
Yeah, sure. Great question. So we have like a tiered system in terms of how we deal with different situations. So on the ground, when you are, you have program leaders and they're W F R certified, and they have these lovely giant, um, med kits, I used to be a program leader, so I know them well. Um, and then on the next level, we have our local team, and so they are, um, in, they are also trained obviously in W F R, but they have relationships with, um, the international clinics that are close by to our, uh, to where we're staying. We're always, um, minimum, uh, or sorry, excuse me, at most one hour away from any clinic. Um, and our clinics are also vetted through international SOS, which is, um, a support for us as well. Um, so, um, and then on the next level, we have a full, uh, director of health and safety team that will survey our, um, safety protocols within each of our countries, um, yearly. And so we follow, obviously, the U S State Department and travel advisories to see kind of updates on different countries and situations. In the case that we think, you know, we deem it that it's not safe to go, then we will cancel the trip or we'll send you to a new, uh, you know, a new itinerary or a new place that we, um, decide upon. So, we couldn't operate without it, you know, without all these kind of protocols. We take it very seriously. Uh, actually, we just got off the phone, um, yesterday we had a whole team call about, uh, sa- uh, health and safety, and we do those, uh, biweekly, um, so everyone is up to date about what's going on. Yeah.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Anyone else? So I just have a couple of questions. Laura, what would be your ideal chaperone to student ratio?
I mean, we just took thirty kids to Peru and we had four chaperones, and that was a really nice ratio, and that's something that we both feel comfortable with.
Okay, you don't have a requirement, or do you?
No, typically we have like a ratio of one to, uh, s- one chaperone to six students.
Okay.
But then in addition to that, you'll have program leader support, so, and that's one to ten. Um, so you know, with a group of forty.
Okay.
So the other staff, that would be there?
Yeah, rest staff, right, and they're with you twenty-four seven for the whole trip.
Staffs. Okay.
Versus when we went to Peru, we only had one tour guide with us. And you know, when Willis would, just went to Europe with sixty kids, he only got two tour guides. So having ten with our group, that's a big difference, yeah.
Ten there, right. Right.
And one is always lo- or at least one is always local and then one international, so someone who's actually from Peru, right, or from, uh, Thailand or Fiji.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And I think that's both valuable for the students, but also in terms of safety.
Right, right.
It was very interesting. One of the ladies that I reached out to for reference, she sent me back these reflection forms that the kids fill out while they're on the trip that Serena talked about, and it was this one girl, and, and she, you know, she wrote, she had gone to Laos, is that how you say it? She, I don't even know where that is. I said to my husband, where is that? I don't know where that is, but it's its own country, right?
I understand where that is.
I thought it was Thailand, and he said, no, it's his own country. But anyways, forget about Laura and her geography.
We're gonna Laos next time.
So she wrote about all the stuff that she learned and, and how grateful she was for the trip and the opportunity. And the, and one very interesting, funny paragraph was she said, "I learned that leaders who run these things are very interesting people." One loves to read Jane Eyre, one wants to be a P H D, and you can't assume because somebody has a job, certain things about them. So I thought that was like, one of the most insightful parts of her whole thing, was that she was like, "These are real people with interests just like people everywhere else," and it was cool. Trying to go to school, trying to make themselves better, like, it was really fascinating if I could read that, yeah.
Are, are both, yeah, are both, um, trips open to nine through grade kids and grades nine through twelve?
I always open my trips for grades nine through twelves, but we do start with twelfth graders first, yes.
Okay. Priorit- Okay.
And, um, we usually do like a first come, first served kind of signup thing, and then we bring it to the office who checks it over to just make sure everyone's okay to go.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, we, I've never told someone they couldn't go so far, so.
And so twenty twenty-one would be the traditional Euro trip. Do you see this?
I guess I never have taken freshmen, because when we say nine through twelve, usually you start advertising a trip now in the spring after the seniors leave.
Okay. Right.
And so it's this ninth through eleventh grade, so next year it'll be ten through twelve.
Okay.
Usually we don't take freshmen. Carolyn really didn't like us to take freshmen. I haven't talked about, to Brian about it, but usually we don't take freshmen, occasionally.
Yeah.
And my daughter was a freshman when she went on Willis's trip, but she was very into that subject matter, so they did let her go, but, um.
Have you had conversation with, um, Jeff Carter? Because we have a French trip going every other year, so one of those years will be that trip?
Yeah. He said he wants to go to Fiji. Same time as my French trip, yes.
So there are two trips going simultaneously.
He's not true, he's not true sure when it, whether his trip will be February or April. They're still working that out with the, um, you know, the new ladies who are in charge of the French school.
Oh, oh, the Fr- the French exchange, exchange.
Exchange, correct.
Yeah, so it could be the same for.
And twenty twenty-one will be the traditional Euro trip as well.
Correct.
That's right.
Yeah.
We're gonna have trouble next year. Next year's gonna be the trouble, the Sony trip. That's the, that's the year that you're gonna get inundated with people who want to.
I, yeah.
So that's why I think a lot of people.
That's why I think I might get a lot of people on the Thailand. I think that, I mean, the Fiji trip, the most we can take there is thirty kids
Yeah.
because if you read through the expedition, you start on one park and you go on this trek, and then you come back. So Serena's figured out if we do fifteen, starting in the two different directions, and we go and we pass each other, then we can still all be there, but we probably, if we do thirty, we, they have a big lodge there like we talked about, but our it- itinerary would have to change. So I think that it might be a good year with a lot of trips going, to do a trip that only lets, uh, you know, kids who really, really want that experience choose it.
Someone with a number, yeah. Um, any other questions from the committee?
Does each kid get their own elephant in Thailand?
It's paired, so two, two hundred elephants.
That's a tough question.
Oh, two of the elephants? I was like, yeah, we do, we all get our own elephants there, and I mean, that's a lot of elephants. We're gonna destroy the jungle, they said.
I just wanna go, so, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have two motions, one for each trip. Um, I don't recall ever approving a trip two years in advance. Okay.
When we, we did the Peru trip this way, and that's why I just did the same thing.
Okay, okay.
When we did Belize and Peru at the same time too, just because something, some trips like this, you know, that are really a big thing and a lot to think about, sometimes families need a little bit more time to wrap their mind around it too, and to save kids, if they really wanna do that,
Right, to, to plan for.
then, you know, at the parents' meeting in June, I'll encourage their parents to say, you know, "You should really work this summer. Get a job at Stop and Shop, put this much money away." Like, they should do something to be able to go.
To that point, do you anticipate the quoted prices in the materials to increase in two years?
For Fiji?
For Fiji?
Um, I mean, in two years, it's potentially, there could be a fluctuation. Um, we try as much as possible to keep it as quoted, but, um.
Okay.
The airfare will probably.
The airfare.
Yeah, that could change, that could be in my head.
Well, yeah, the airfa- I mean, airfare is like so volatile, honestly, it's more about when we request it, but we take care of all the airfare for the students
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
in terms of like organizing it and so forth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so grab a motion to approve the April twenty twenty trip to Thailand. So we, have a second?
Second.
Second. Oh, sorry. Paul, uh, did he, Craig, you got it?
Craig, okay, uh, roll call please.
Hi, Paul Kearney.
Aye, Craig McCallum.
Aye, Ashley Cleary.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Hi, Jen Madden.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the April twenty twenty-one trip to Fiji? Second?
Second.
Paul? Okay, thank you. Roll call?
Hi, Paul Kearney.
Aye, Craig McCallum.
Aye, Ashley Cleary.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Hi, Jen Madden.
Yay!
Kearney.
That's it.
Thank you.
So exciting. So you're the chaperone to Fiji, I'll go.
I have not traveled around the world. My husband has been around the world a few times and he said that Thailand is his favorite place.
So we'll be able to say that.
My team would probably be happy to chaperone.
Wow.
Amazing, that's so cool.
Well, that's good to know. That makes me happy. Thanks, Ashley.
I'd love to, I don't think I'll ever get to be on it, but it's great. I'd love to go back on the trail.
Why don't you go?
Could I ask that we go back to the reorganization because it's not completed?
Yeah, I made, I made a, I made a note, yes.
Upstairs, you know, she says she's.
Hi, hi, Gillis, four ninety-two Jerusalem Roar. Um, is there any movement on our children going to Washington DC?
That's a great question. Those kids have given us.
I've, twelve years I've been asking. And we go to, we go to international, Kohasset seems to just go international at ease.
I can answer that for you. Uh, there was uh routine trips to uh DC with the middle school over a number of years before I came to Kohasset. It was revisited several times while I was assistant superintendent. Uh, the, and um actually Cynthia Gordon and I actually did, I've, I've been the tour guide to Washington before.
So we even go, I, I had kids that took in school twelve, thirteen years ago, so I brought it up then.
Right. Yes. Correct. And. What happened was the um teachers at the time did not want to do the trip.
Get rid of them.
Oh.
No, get rid of them.
Uh, the other, the other piece is the curriculum in the middle school changed from American history to uh more world and geography and now it's civics as well. So it might swing back into the civics. But it really, teachers are volunteering their time. Um, and that is something that has to be the discussion. And I think with the new administration, I think that's something that can come back.
Okay, now the kids who take Spanish, when was the last time that they went to Spain? Now, I broke my heart that my kids didn't take French because they would've gone to Quebec, Montreal, Europe, Paris, France, wherever. The kids who take Spanish, when was the last time they went?
Two years ago, they went to Costa Rica.
They went to Costa Rica. And before that, where'd they go?
Yeah. They went, they used to go all the time to, was it Ecuador or, I don't know, I'm not good with those countries.
They went to Guatemala.
Guatemala, that's right. They go to homestead.
There was tournaments.
Yeah, but then, then it got to be not a good political environment, so that's why they didn't go to.
No, and then, but I mean, but to answer your question, there was a history of that discussion.
Uh, Cynthia Gordon and I, uh, with, I have a very good friend who does those tours and we did uh do.
The kids who go, take Spanish, get nothing. They just, so the kids in eighth grade go to Montreal and have the French group. Then in, in high school, they go to Paris once or twice if they want to.
But Senor does run trips to South America, but she only gets like six to eight kids who wanna go and do that really language immersive program. Like it's different than being a big city in Paris, being in Central America, living in a I just don't think, I think it just requires developing relationships that we don't have, yeah.
So I think, I think Mrs. Gillis, I think when, we're gonna have a new administration come into the middle school and I highly recommend you make an appointment with them this summer, um and talk to them about what you envision, because you're really talking middle school and I think we're kind of blending here on, you know, trips at the high school, trips at the middle school.
It's those are high school trips, yeah.
You're, there, there hasn't been a middle school focused Spanish excursion.
Or Washington DC.
Or Washington DC. So, so when we have a new principal and a ci- uh, a new administrative staff, I would encourage you, yeah.
Well, definitely will. I just think that this, you know, this grouping of, okay, so now we're going another, Fiji, Ecuador, and all because it's.
Well, well, you have to understand, it's, it's, it's teacher led because it is their time, um and, and their interest. And it, if you can't get a staff member who wants to take their time to go to Washington DC, it's kind of tough to mandate it.
It should be more of a curriculum.
When I was down there, it was every single.
But it hasn't, it hasn't matched, but Pat, but Mrs. Gillis, it hasn't matched the curriculum. A trip to Washington DC in the middle school, as Mrs. Deema said, has not matched the curriculum because the state frameworks for curriculum in social studies has been world history. And it has just recently changed where civics is now becoming part of it. So there might be more of an appetite going forward to have a trip to Washington.
Well, I will tell you, I was down there two years ago with my son, um and it was just shameful to see Marshfield uh situates Rockland, not, no, not Rockland, uh, Noval, and all of these towns. Penguin was there and it was just like, we can't get our children down there?
Well, I think it's a good point. So, so let's regroup.
Everybody else can do it, but we can't.
We can do it.
We can do it.
We can figure it out.
It's been fourteen, thirteen years and we try to get to Washington DC.
Okay.
It's funny you say that. My, my children are in eighth grade and they talk during seventh grade and they wanna go to Washington. They're always asking me about it and, you know, be, and thank you for bringing that up because I think it's really important, especially Washington, to see the capitals and to know what American history is. So to you, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come down here tonight to do that and, and, and thanks for your passion for the kids in Kohasset. Appreciate that.
Do you have a question?
I was just gonna say, they just put in new frameworks for social studies. I believe they start next year or they started this year.
Next year, next year.
They start next year. And there has been a shift in the emphasis. And the emphasis did go to world history in grades six, seven, and eight. Um, I am with you. I think we need more American history in those grades. The eighth grade is now the focus is civics. So hopefully maybe that'll make some changes.
No, just, it, the years sitting here, watching these trips, and, you know, and God love the teachers who do it, but it's like, it should be, you know, I remember talking to, to one of the former principals, like, why aren't we going to, you know, why are the kids who are taking Spanish or the kids who are taking French have gone to Montreal and they've gone to Paris at least once or twice? We're not a travel agency. We are a school. Why can't we go domestically? So even so, then I said, why aren't we, aren't the kids who are taking Spanish? Why aren't they going to Spain? We, I can't get a teacher. Well, you, the next person you hire, this is part of her curriculum, here's of her curriculum. I don't understand this. And part of the curriculum for the eighth grade.
Well, the, well, the curriculum is, is based off state frameworks and if they travel on vacation weeks, you can't mandate that. You can't mandate a teacher.
You, you're staying overnight and all that.
And staying overnight, yeah. So, but your point, your point is heard. I, I think, I, you have agreement with the committee that um a, a Washington DC trip, in the least, is certainly appropriate. And I think we have a plan. We'll touch base um when there's a new administrative team at the middle school now, that the middle school is separated. And we'll see what can happen.
And with the Spanish, maybe Ecuador or Saint Jeanette is not a feasible country. Maybe it is Spain. You know, if, if, if the French children, the students who take French are going to Paris and France, then maybe the children who take Spanish should go to Spain.
But, but, but everybody's, everybody can go on those Euro trips. Those aren't just exclusively French students.
No, I know, I know.
So, so those, please don't confuse those trips as being language driven trips.
Yes.
So those are European history driven.
Art and history.
Art and history and.
And they went to Spain.
And, and world languages.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But not, not for anyone who took Spanish.
Yeah.
Well, anyone who took Spanish, yeah.
And anyone who took Spanish, yeah, anyone, anyone who goes.
And like on my trip, I had, um, we were in Peru and they speak Spanish. And we had six kids who were, it was amazing. Caroline Donahue, you should have heard her talking to everybody. If anybody couldn't communicate, we'd just say Caroline or who else could do. We know the teams.
Okay. Anyway, they were great. Yep, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. On the major. Here you go. We need to um go backwards a little bit and finish the reorganization of the committee. I was remiss in not doing that. I apologize. We need to take a nomination for vice chair for the committee. Um, vice chair acts in the place of, by
Thank you so much.
in place of the chair in the absence of the chair.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and essentially that is the primary role and focus. So could I have a nomination for vice chair?
Madam Chipper, so may I just ask us?
Yep. Yep, we can have conference.
Information point here. What, what exactly is the, are the duties of the vice chair?
The, the, the vice chair is the stand-in for the chair if the chair is not present at a meeting. Or if the chair is um incapacitated or on a leave of absence and cannot fulfill the role of the chair, the vice chair steps in um to that position.
Kind of like the vice president.
Yep.
Okay, so that's, there's no specific sort of.
There, there's no, there's no specific roles if I were to become incapacitated.
It's a plan B.
Plan B.
Okay.
Yep. Um, the vi- the vice chair would run the meeting.
Okay.
Alright, um. So, any nominations for vice chair? None? I'll make the nomination. Jenner, I, alright, anyone interested? Before we nominate, anyone interested other?
I would, I would be happy to be vice chair.
Okay. Okay. So um, could I have a nomination? Uh, could I have a motion to appoint Jen Madden as the vice chair?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, okay, second. Okay, all in favor? Roll call?
Hi, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Craig McCallum.
Hi, Ashley Cleary. Hi, Ellen Mark. Yeah, you vote for yourself.
Uh, uh, hi, Jen Madden.
Unless you really don't want it. Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jen. So the next position and before I ask for nomination, um, that is important is the secretary of the committee. And the secretary's responsibilities, um. Barb Ste- I've been the secretary before. Barb Steffen was the last secretary. Um. So technically, the secretary shall keep or cause to be kept a permanent record available to the public upon request in which a full and accurate reading of the meeting, date, time, place, members present or absent, and all votes, orders, and proceedings of the school committee, including executive session, shall be reported. Send out or cause to be sent out notices of meetings, um, review and recommend minutes to the full school committee. Maintain or cause to be maintain the manuals of policies, bylaws, administrative regulations affecting committee and system operations. Sign all documents calling for his or her approval. In the absence of the chair and the vice chair, assume the duties of the chair. Um, so in the first point where it says keep or cause to be kept, the, the minutes. Um, Tracy Connors is our recording secretary and she, she takes the minutes. So you don't have to, the secretary does not actually have to type up all the minutes. Tracy does an unbelievable job. And we have a, a protocol between the secretary of the committee and Tracy on the submission, the correction, and the final approval of the minutes. Um, send out or cause to be sent out notice of the meetings. Um, the administrative assistant to the superintendent of schools, Jennifer Seritas, she sends out the agendas. Once the agenda is completed by the chair and the superintendent, she will send it out to not only all of us, but to the town hall for posting. Um, the secretary does review and recommend the minutes to the full committee. Maintain or cause to be maintain the manuals of policies. That essentially is the policy subcommittee of the school committee. So the secretary is not directly involved with that responsibility. Um, and therefore it's cause to be maintain. That's the policy subcommittee. Sign all documents. Um, there are no documents the secretary signs that the committee doesn't sign. So there's nothing extraordinary in that. And then in the absence of the chair, the vice chair, assume the duties of the chair to run the meeting. So um, it's in a very important role because, um, Craig, you had asked me the other day about why we keep minutes and why isn't the video enough? Well, um, mass general, the mass open meeting law has stipulations that minutes are to be kept and recorded. Um, with the list of agenda, of documents to be handed out, which you can't really have on a video recording. Um, as you know, like all the, all the documents are noted on our agendas and they're all stamped as such. And so all the documents go with Tracy. She gets a packet and are part of, part of the official recording of the meeting. So, does anyone have any comments or questions about the role of the secretary? No? No? Tracy, what do you think? Did I explain, did I explain, did I explain? Okay, alright. Um, because you've been the only constant in this. Alright, um, I'd like to open for a nomination for secretary of the Kohasset School Committee. Would it, would anyone like it?
Yeah, would anyone like to do the job?
No, thank you. Craig?
No, I, my position is that I would like to get a feel for this before I'm having any additional responsibilities, which I think makes sense for probably both Ashley and I, but I won't speak, I'll only speak for myself, which is why I didn't volunteer for vice chair. I understand that it's a five-person committee, so it can be difficult. People don't volunteer, but, you know, I was sworn in yesterday, so I'm not gonna just jump in and be, you know.
I guess I, I guess I have to do it and I will. That's what it is. So it'll be my pleasure to do.
Well, then I nominate, uh, Mr. Paul Kearney.
Okay. Uh, do we have a second?
Thank you, Paul.
Second.
Yeah, we can, there's no words.
Hmm?
Second.
And, uh, so Craig nominated Paul, Ashley second. Roll call please.
Hi, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Craig McCallum.
Hi, Ashley Cleary. Hi, Ellen Mark.
Hi, Jen Madden.
Okay. And, um, Paul, you know, I, I'm here as a resource for you. I've done it before. Um, I, I, you know, as you know, I take prolific notes anyway. So, um, if there's, if you ever have questions or flow, we'll go, I'll go over with you, the nuts and bolts of the flow of how the secretary works with Tracy and how the whole process goes.
It's not that hard.
Okay.
No, no, it's not that hard.
No, it isn't. It's not as worse than it is. Huh?
Huh?
It sounded worse than it is.
Well, well, when we, when you add it, you can, it can be a little daunting. And, and the, and the, and the trick to it is to stay on top of it.
I was a poor boy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, if it's alright with you, because it also includes executive session minutes. I'll do the executive session minutes until you get your feet wet and, and you get the process flowing. And if you say, okay, I'm ready, you take them on.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Or not, then. Okay.
And it, it's, it should also be the case that, you know, everybody here can take notes, so.
Just, just combine the notes.
So that, well, no, I mean, so that when we approve the minutes, there's, you know, I, I am gonna try to take better notes because I think it's important as a committee to keep track of what we're doing. And so, um, it, it's, I, it's a skill set in order to do it, but there's nothing to say that everybody on the committee can't help out. And that when you look over the minutes, you know, so, because Ellen catches things sometimes and she'll refer back to her notes. So, and we have the videotape, I guess, as well, but, um.
I, 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 I would venture to say that ninety-eight point five percent of what Tracy submits in the first draft of minutes is spot on accurate.
Alright, I agree. Yeah, lucky, very lucky, Tracy. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Do we need a roll call on this one?
Yes.
So I'm excited.
We did do a roll call.
Thank you.
We did a roll call.
Right, please.
Yes, it was, it was five, five zero. Okay. Alright, so thank you for indulging the backward motion there. Okay, um, sorry, Louise, back to you.
And the committees, do we do that tonight as well?
Oh.
That's another.
We're gonna do that down in the school committee comments and communication.
Okay.
The agent, thank you.
Um, we have Steve Rettumby, our athletic director, here to give us an athletic update. Hot seat for you, Mr. Joe, Jen. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I know, the poll is kinda odd.
Yeah. Alright, um.
Do you want to start with this?
Sure, yes. Um, thank you for having me. Um, it's always exciting to be able to come here and update on the wonderful things our sports teams are doing, our student athletes and our coaches. So, um, I will start. Uh, last time when I was here in the fall, there was, there was a lot of success. We had an unprecedented amount of success in this fall and carrying it right into the winter. There was a lot of great things to celebrate and be proud of. Um, we had, um, I'll start right at the top. Um, well, league all-stars, we had twenty-three. It was very similar to the fall. Three league MVPs. Um, nine ledger all-scholastics, which was very close to the fall, and that's, that's a high number. Uh, two for the Globe and, and we had one Globe Coach of the Year. So, um, it's a lot of recognition from a lot of different places, uh, which is, which is very exciting. And again, coming from such a small town, small community, when you get to those Patriot Ledger, Globe, the, the pool gets bigger and bigger and bigger. So to still be getting recognition at that level compared to everyone in the state, uh, it really shows the work and, um, the success our kids have. Uh, boys' basketball had another very successful year this year. They went back to the south final, um, where they lost to, to Abington, who went on to the state championship. Um, we had three league all-stars, two ledger all-scholastics. Our, our head coach, um, reached a milestone of five hundred wins, which got a lot of publicity, made a lot of papers. Very exciting, very hard to do. Um, so we were, we were very excited. Everyone got to enjoy the fun in that. It was kind of a community event. Um, girls' basketball reached the playoffs again this year. They made it to the semifinal. Uh, if you take a notice there. If you take a notice there, they have a record of, of twelve and eleven, though they, they got into the playoffs, um, at five hundred, they, they just made it. And then they went on to the first round, uh, number sixteen seed, they were the lowest seed, they knocked off the number one and undefeated West Bridgewater. So, um, they, West Bridgewater was twenty and out, and, uh, our girls went in there and, and won, so that, that was very exciting. And, um, headlined by player of the year, Molly Greer, who's also a all-scholastic in the ledger and globe, uh, as well as our coach received, uh, all-scholastic, uh, globe coach of the year. Boys' hockey, um, a lot of improvements in our boys' hockey program, um, obviously success with, with all-stars and ledgers. But one thing I highlighted there is, uh, uh, the team sportsmanship award. Uh, so one thing really coming in this year, and I, I didn't start it in the fall, but really in the winter, in my coaches meeting, I, I challenged our coaches to, to go out and win the, the sportsmanship award. It's something that we as a school, um, haven't won collectively over the three, three seasons in over twenty-five years. So I said, you know, we have so much success, so many great things, well, this is one we haven't won in a few decades, so somebody go out and win it and let's see if we can climb. And, um, I thought our, our coach really took that conversation to heart, and our, our boys' hockey team actually went from finishing last in sportsmanship to first in the league, and, and, and you could really see it transpire throughout the course of the season. So, the win-loss record, not necessarily there, but a lot of great things to, to build on and a great group of kids.
And Steve, that sportsmanship is voted by the coaches of the social league?
Yes. Yes, yes, all the coaches, yeah, that's voted by collectively from the group.
There's never, there's never really any losses, it's always learned, isn't it?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I always, when I'm a coach, I tell our girls, we don't lose, we learn. So, yeah, this is, this is great, and, uh, I want to think, is, is volleyball a winter sport, and how does that look here at Cohasset? Cause I know there's a huge, I know Laura Sutler made sure that we, like, uh, the, the, it's all lined for that. When do you think that we can get a, a team?
We've, we've discussed in the terms of starting it as like a club, so, like any sport, let's just get the numbers there, uh, we have the space to provide.
Yeah.
The fortunate thing, uh, the most fortunate for volleyball, for the females, it's in the fall.
Okay.
So really they'd be competing with nobody for gym space, so which is great to have a, a new startup sport, is that they're not really gonna have to be, you know, oh, it's one more team to try to fit into the turf or something, they'd really have their own space, so that would be kind of a great avenue to jumpstart that. And then for the boys, it's a spring sport. So, again, most of your sports are outside, um, there really wouldn't be much competition then in terms of finding them a home and space. It's really just growing the interest, getting the numbers, finding people that wanna volunteer to, to coach, get involved, and then seeing really where it can grow and is it sustainable.
Right, so we have, we have the squad floor, we have the lines are with the new gym that like.
Yes, yeah, with the new gym, we didn't have them remove any of the, um, you know, the holes in the floor where the poles go, so, uh, that's all still intact, yeah.
Right, so we're ready to go, we just need more participation to, uh, to go, to get more people involved, and it's girls and boys.
Yes, yeah, and, and right now at the high school level, there, there isn't really much interest at all, um, I'd say there's n- no interest. But, uh, coming up this spring, I'll be doing the participation survey with the eighth graders that are gonna be coming up to the high school. So again, that'll be a great opportunity to potentially include that on there and find out, usually we have like an other and kids will list what other sports. Um, you know, rugby is another one that's come up, um, in conversation, uh, that's a spring sport, so, um, we'll, we'll put that on there and see if there's a growing interest, yeah, yeah.
Oh wow. Wow. Yeah, because, uh, Hangum's got like eighteen teams, like we, uh, we represented, and I gotta give a shout out to Cohasset. Uh, Cohasset seventh grade girls, uh, we won the whole thing as a half a team, so we put a half a team in from Cohasset, we won the whole thing. So, there's a lot of girls, we got a lot of talent, uh, and I just wanted to kinda tell you that in the seventh grade is a big push for volleyball. So hopefully by ninth grade or tenth grade, we can get in, um, cause does most school districts have them now?
You have, you have to consider the size of the school, you know, cause we're, we're small compared to Hangum, and I actually met with Laura sort of our last summer. We talked extensively about this, how, and, and there is kind of a, a procedure for getting a new sport off the ground at the high school level. So that's whether it's a ju- junior varsity or varsity sport, and, and Stephen alluded to, well, you know, you have to be a club, you also have to be self-funded, have to have volunteers, um, and, and show sustainability, because it's challenging to put in a, a high school program if you're not gonna have three years of sustainability, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Cause you get the league to say, you get, you get teams to, to come to, to play you, and then next year if you don't have a team, they don't have anyone to play either. So you kinda have, it's kind of a good fake thing, like, we've got a program, you've got a program, and we can work this together, so.
And maybe partner with another town such as Situate, I don't know if the Situate have a team, do you know?
I don't know if they do.
Okay, I'll try to find that out, it's more research.
I know, I know, I would get, in, in our ten-team league, there, there's about five teams, five schools in our league that have it. So, again, if this were something that would get off the ground, we would stay in our same league, competing against the same schools we do amongst other sports.
Right.
They just, instead of making it two sides, right now we're separating two sides of the league, they just do it as one hole, so. Yeah, they would certainly welcome six of the schools into that, they'd encourage it, so. Yeah. I left off here. Uh, girls' hockey, uh, again, another year of, of making the playoffs, making the tournament. Lauren Farron, that's a, that's a co-op we have of Hanover, um, so, uh, Lauren Farron was our, our all-star that, that represented, um, Cohasset on that side. Swim, we had a very successful swim season, um, highlighted and very proud to say of our, uh, state champion, Emily Appleton, who won the state championship in the, in the five hundred free, so, um, again, uh, globe all-scholastic, and then at the ledger, we had, uh, multiple students represented, represented there as well.
And where's our, where's our, where is our swim?
Uh, we, we swim at the Situate, um, racket club, yes, and then we've had, um, some of our, we've had some meets there. We also, uh, rent out the, the pool in Quincy when we do some of our larger, larger meets. But, uh, Lincoln Hancock Pool is a beautiful pool, so, um, they do over there, but, yeah, um, great year for Emily, and she has a lot of, um, Ivy League interest, which is very exciting.
What year is she? What year is she?
Uh, she's a junior. Um, the ski team, uh, we did, we did well in, in ski team, they qualified as a team, um, for the first time, uh, ever at states. So, um, the numbers were, were down, the team was smaller, but we got more out of, of what we had and, and they did a, they did a great job. Wrestling, and a, another great year, per usual, we had multiple kids reach the sectionals, all-state tournament, state tournament. And again, recognized at the league level and ledger all-scholastic level. Um, and also, the, lastly, there's our, our gymnastics team who we co-op with Norwell. They don't really compete in terms of like state levels of the teams, but in our league meet, they, um, they finished second in this year, this year, which was a, a large improvement from last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I've got a couple more questions.
Sure, yes, absolutely.
Um, as you know, we're trying to do a more of a wellness for, for kids, and more participation in sports, uh, is a huge way for kids to get more, uh, self, uh, discipline, some more motivation, you know, basically to feel better, to be part of a team. Uh, one of the things, and, and I thank you, Patrick, for putting us together with the, uh, state board, school committee there, um, and one of the things that we're trying to do is get kids to partici- to participate more, and have you signed up yet? So, like, is there a, is, is, say if somebody was to want to get the kids involved in sport, and, and the kid's like, hey, I don't know what to play. I mean, we have so many different options, how do we get them to actually, would it, would they contact you, or what? I got a seventh grade, eighth grade kid that doesn't wanna do anything, I wanna get him in a sport. What are, what are some of the procedures that I could go to, or if I'm new in town, how do I contact, what sports are available? Because a lot of them are already picked all the kids since, you know, it seems like that. Do they contact you, or what, what are, what are some of the things that they could do to get the kids involved in sports?
Yeah, I think we have a lot of resources, I think, uh, at, at that age, the youth level, there's a lot of youth and club, yeah, club organizers to get involved with.
Rec. Uh.
But, yes, I would think I would be the main point of, of contact for anything like that, um, related. I'm in the, the process of building up our, uh, school athletics webpage, um, Cohasset Athletics, you know, dot com. I have a slide right on the main page that has my information, to call, email, whatever it may be, reach out, so, um, yeah, and I'd be happy to get anyone in contact with, with really anyone they wanted to. Um, I've, I've spoken to Patrick, uh, briefly about, you know, next year with the separation of school, what does it look like in creating a potential middle school intramural? Or maybe where it's not defining teams or defining a, a sport or a league, it's just, you know, we're gonna offer this for six weeks as an intramural, come try it out, maybe you'll fall in love with it.
Right.
Um, and if, if you don't, it's no major commitment, it's something a middle schooler, that, that gives them the opportunity to try everything. And then when it gets to the high school level, that's more where we start making decisions on, on what, what our interests are.
So you're saying not, not only just organize sports, but there's gonna be stuff, you know, we had one last year about how to, uh, uh, work out at the gym. Somebody had given a grant, correct? It was, uh, I forget who gave the grant, you guys remember?
No, it was the Clark Chatterton Sunday, the summer fitness program.
Yeah, so, so those are the things that more and more, uh, people can understand, that there is something for everybody, we have a sport for you.
Yeah.
So, if you're listening out there, uh, that is something that's very important for the wellness of the child.
Yeah, we're in the worst right now, so this summer, so we don't have the grant, uh, for this summer, but in wanting to build that program up and getting more kids involved and just out to start their summer day on the, on the right foot, um, I'm gonna volunteer a couple days a week to open up the school, do a couple of workouts with the kids, Officer Greg Taylor is gonna volunteer some of his time, other coaches in the school, so that's definitely something that we wanna build, um.
And how's, how's the equipment inside the gym, maybe I can take a peek over there, the treadmills all work, is everything like up to par?
Yeah, I, I mean, everything's working in, in safe order, uh, yeah.
Okay, it could always be better, it's, it is what it is, it's a gym, right?
Sure, absolutely.
We just, we took in a donation last year of exercise equipment from Blackrock, if I remember correctly.
Right.
Some bikes, some treadmills in there, no elliptical.
Some, some new ice cream, right.
I have the notes on them.
We also, the year before, had a universal donated, so it, the equipment right now looks, if I remember correctly, it's better than it has in lots of times.
I, I, like I said, I'd love to, yeah, I'll be all the time.
Yeah.
So, so, so there, just so we're clear, there, there's two separate things, there's the whole middle school, get involved, learn a sport, try something out, right? Which with a separate middle school, perhaps we'll have an intramural program. Steve is the athletic director for the high school, um, and you have, uh, indicated you're gonna have a survey, you're gonna send out to current eighth through eleventh graders to indicate what they might be interested in next year, so eighth graders will have an opportunity. Um, and then you have preseason signup meetings, right?
Yes.
So, that's when kids, you know, and when you're in the high school, uh, all the kids know, they know when all these meetings are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome, awesome, you're doing a great job.
Okay.
And thank you again, I wanna give a shout out to you, uh, you know, I know you talked earlier about you got poison ivy, cleaning out your view, you know?
Sure, we got something.
Yeah, and, 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 uh, they really did a great job up there, uh, cleaning the item, and, you know, what you do for the kids is great, and, and, thank you so much.
Thanks, yeah, kids are great, that's easy.
All right.
Thanks.
So, we move on to the financial.
Thank you, yes, yeah, financial report, yes, yeah, that, that was just a, that was a surprise, that was the highlights and the accolades and the success.
Now the sneak one's up.
Um, so, yes, so in front of you, the second piece there i- is the winter sports, uh, revenue and expenses. It starts with the lead sheet, and then you can go through, there's a breakdown, um, sport by sport, um, leading, you know, off the, the lead sheet. You know, some of the things that, that stand out that, you know, I'd wanna, I guess, uh, explain or field any questions on. The, the gate receipts, I see there's something there that last year, uh, they're down in comparison to last year. But if you follow down through expenses, this, this was a season where, one, we, uh, looking back at it, we had less playoff games, less teams making the playoffs, which is, uh, you're gonna lose, uh, gate revenues that way. Um, but we also had more away games, um, this season, um, so with that, you'll see an uptick in transportation, but you'll also see a down in, in, um, facility rental and officials and, and game staff, cause that's having less, less, um, home games. But we had a couple of nice opportunities this year, our hockey team was, was set to have a home game, but they got invited to play at Walter Brown, which is where BU plays. So, we forfeited the home game at the Weymouth MDC so that the, the kids could go in and, and play a game there, which, uh, yeah, so it was a great opportunity. So, there, there was just some, uh, a few things like that, and sometimes the way the scheduling falls year to year, you could have a year where you have a few more, um, away games than home, or a few more homes than away, but the, the target is fifty-fifty, but, uh, that doesn't always work out, um, ideally.
And so, um, Steve, as I had mentioned to you, you know, the, the user fees, um, for the new committee members, the high school athletes,
Yes.
whether you're a freshman JV or varsity participant, you pay a user fee, uh, your first user fee of your school year is two hundred and fifty dollars, your second is two fifty, the third is one fifty, and you have a family cap, so if you have multiple children in the grades nine through twelve, the family cap is nine hundred. So, when I was looking at the math, it seems like the user fees, um, for winter or fall, could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, sure, absolutely, and, and it is off, I mean, it's simple math there, if you take the number of participants and multiply it, but the, um, you know, the reasoning there, I would say, in order, one would be, um, outstanding fees that, that need to be collected, um, still at this point. Secondly, would be families already hitting the cap going into the winter, so multiple family members playing, uh, a fall sport. Um, and then lastly would be, um, waivers that were requested to waive the fee for the, the season.
And we hope to collect the fees that are owed.
Yes, absolutely, so, so letters are out to those that owe a fee, and, um, you know, it's also been included that next year you won't be able to participate in a sport until that fee is cleared up, so there's a, a process in place of it needs to be cleared up by X date or.
And the waivers are designed for economic hardship hypothetically, so if there's a letter sent out and the family has a hardship, they have the opportunity to ask for a waiver?
Yes, yes, so, um, in that, I don't really, that process doesn't then come through me, but in the, in, yeah, what I sent out said, you know, if, if for some reason, it was on there, so.
But they're not gonna get barred from sports for not being.
No, 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 never, no, no.
I assumed that, but, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but in, when I sent, in sending something out, I included it in, in there just in case somebody wanted to, to use it without having to reach out to me again and say, hey, by the way, can you send me a waiver, I just have it there, so they can.
Well, is there another way of, is it just, is it just like we were talking about with Michael about possibly doing an electronically fund transfer, so that, you know, cause nine hundred dollars upfront, you know, my kid just hit me up for frozen, four fifty, like, it's just bang, 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 bang. Is there any way that just, to, to, to like spread that out during the season?
So they do pay season by season, um, but in the instance.
Okay, or. Like, ma- monthly?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's, I know past practices, they've taken, say, payments, so, a- again, um, I'm not looking to design, design it into like creating like collections, but certainly, uh, willing to work with anybody, and I know the business office is willing to work with anybody, so.
And you wanna make it the exception, not, not the practice, because it just becomes an accounting nightmare to, that, you know, to, to track. If you have two hundred participants a season and two hundred fees to track, and you have multiple payments on those two hundred, you can see how exponentially that would grow and become, you know, an accounting quid, quid mire, so to speak. But, the athletic chart, in my experience, has always been accommodating to individual needs of families, what they can be.
The other thing is, um, as far as the gates receipts, we've talked about the scene, that there's no boosted donations during the winter sports, you don't have football, you don't have swim, obviously they don't have any boosters. We had talked about, uh, maybe doing a, uh, a family pays upfront, because some of the things, like, we've all gone to these basketball games, and we don't bring any cash, you get these three kids with you, you're like, you know, I just think it's just gonna be more acceptable to take credit cards and for us to get into the times as far as, maybe just do a hundred and fifty dollars for the whole family. And if you, if you break it down, I mean, gate receipts at twelve thousand dollars, I mean, if you, if you have three hundred families that are participating, and everybody puts in three hundred, at, at, at a hundred dollars, you know, we're up to thirty thousand, we just doubled that revenues. So that's something we wanna consider as well, uh, to make it easier for families, you know, if they're.
Well, well, would we have that, cause you have a, you have a hundred and eighty-six participants, not every sport charges a gate receipt. So, I think, credit card, I've been to like every social league gym, no one has a credit card machine, I don't think, do they?
No, um, the closest I've seen is when you go to some of the schools now, and if you wanna buy like a sweatshirt or something, they'll, they'll take Venmo.
Ven, or on your phone, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, um, we'll just, every kind of stick that, but, yeah.
Maybe someone can.
I think, yeah, I think it, I think really, Paul, I think a lot of it, I, I agree with you, we ought to drive gate receipts because it is a revenue stream. I think it really comes into the promotion of the events, and I think in the building, we do a great job, but over the years, and I've been here a long time, there's less and less townspeople coming to games.
To the games, yeah.
And it's mostly just the parents of the kids who, who are playing, with the, the exception is football, cause that's like Friday night light, so
Right. Right.
you do get a lot of townspeople, so, you know, I think maybe a good objective might be, how, how do we, how do we generate interest and excitement in the town for these events to go to, you know, that are inside, that aren't called.
Right. Well, if they can get, if they can get sixteen hundred people to come up, see us play basketball, um, the teachers and some of the parents, as you guys all know.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, and, and, and I think, to Ellen, you're, to your point, bringing more people in, they'll see that these games are exciting. I mean, you see them all the time, and some of these games go back and forth, now, I went to the, uh, Boston Latin girls' basketball game and hit, they hit a three at the end to win it, I mean, I thought it was, it was jumping out of my seat. Like, it's just, and I think people need to realize that, and that not only are they giving back to their school, they're promoting kids, they, they're promoting children, and I think it's, uh, something that we can all do well by doing, so. Now, I went to the Boston Latin Girls basketball game, and they hit a three at the end to win it, I mean, I thought it was jumping out of my seat, like, it's just, and I think people need to realize that, and that not only are they giving back to their school, they're promoting kids, they, they're promoting children, and I think it's something that we can all do well by doing, so, more and more we can promote.
Yeah, can you speak about the boosters, 'cause I asked you about that too?
Yes, sure, so, we do have some booster donations coming in, I'd say very, very similar to the FY eighteen, would be slightly up just because of a three percent increase, but the donations aren't in yet because with a, speaking with one of the booster presidents being new, me being new, everyone's just trying to really clean up their process, and them looking at their accounting, they, they came to me and they said, well, in order to, we just want record of it, we want something that we can file away, and if I pass it off to someone new, they can just pick it up easily. So when they started and was saying, you know, can we have the pay stubs of the individuals, so I didn't really feel comfortable, the business office did not feel comfortable, so we decided we're not gonna provide with all the personal information attached to it, somebody's pay stub. So really, it's, I guess in the past, we've just been doing it in good faith, and there's been no one to say, hey, I didn't get paid, so it was, it was all in order, but I understand for their accounting processes why they want that, so what I mentioned is, and the last thing I just proposed was, can we put together, say, a, a chain email with the individual who got paid, and the booster president, and myself, saying, you know, Paul, could you please confirm that you received this monetary value for this season, da, 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 and hopefully that, that person's response, acknowledging that they did indeed receive that amount, will be sufficient for the donation to, to then come in. But they have agreed to the amount, they're not, nothing's changed, we met prior to the season, they said, you know, they're, they're fully on board, and they've accounted to pay that money, they just want a more clean process.
What about just sending an invoice, like, you know, like to co-host of basketball, boy, boosters, boys, varsity assistant coach, X and L, for the K scale, girls, I mean-
So I, I mentioned that, but again, there was no, what would be the confirmation to know that that person got that amount of money?
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Because I said, well, we'll just invoice you, but then it's, it was more, well-
Yeah, 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 well, you can show them the, the step, you can show them the salary scale in the contract.
Yeah, again, it was the knowing that that individual actually received that in a check, yeah.
Yeah. That, that amount, yeah. So, so you guys understand, we have basketball boosters, we have hockey boosters, I'm just talking about the winter sports.
Yes.
Swim boosters, and booster groups, we don't have one booster group for all sports, each sport has their own, and they donate through the athletic office anything from stipends for assistant coaches, equipment or uniforms. On their own, they'll purchase practice gear or swag for the coaches and the, and the kids, that don't go through the athletic department, 'cause that's stuff that they keep. So, you'll, in the year end report, we'll see the winter booster donations.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Steve, have they ever tried, the boosters ever tried getting like local businesses to, to, to sponsorships, like, so like, for like the, like the little kids, it's like, I run a local business, and, and I would like, you know, throw our name in the back of like a little league shirt or something like that, and in the end, you get a picture of the team and a thank you pla- you know, it's nice to hang in the office, people like to do that. And it might work well for the high school too, you know, where you get a sort of photo of the team and a thank you at the end for like a five hundred dollar, you know, donation or something like that, that's ten percent of what you were taking in, you know, and so if you get a couple businesses to do that, you could easily double your figures. Well, maybe, maybe, you know, it's just an incentive, you know, it's like a five hundred dollar picture basically, but, you know, we like to hang it in our, in our offices, you know, it's nice, it shows community support and stuff, yeah, yeah, on the-
Yeah.
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 Right, and I think most people would love to do it.
Yeah, and on the high school, um, on the high school side, I, I would like to build that up more and create that, I would say, quite a few of our booster groups do that now in terms of shirts that they get, and, and probably their biggest seller, football does it, hockey does it, lacrosse does it, is they generate a book, and in the book has every kid's picture, kind of a bio, their families, what's going on about them, and then as you flip through, there's all your business, sponsorships, you know, and there's probably fifteen plus per book, so that's really what-
Okay.
Their program, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Their own, yeah. One, two, more.
Yeah, easily, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but that's what-
I used to, I used, I used to do the football book, so, you know, we used to raise twenty-five thousand dollars with a football book.
My point is though, is that I'm less, I'm less inclined to do stuff like that, because I don't see like basically any value in it, and, and it just gets lost in the shuffle, I mean, I understand you're still supporting the team, but it's nice to receive that, because the value the business gets is they get to show that they're, you know, display, you know, their, their community support, rather than just throwing it in the back of a book that no one's really, you know, looking at the business anyway. So, I mean, it's, it's just, it, it's an idea, it's an idea, you're obviously running the show, which is a suggestion, it might, might generate more revenue. Yeah. Might not.
I, it's, do we have any more? Did, did, did you wrap it up with that, 'cause I just wanna have one more question.
Oh, yeah.
What is something that you'd like for us, what, is there anything that, in your wish lists, like, would it be more coaches, would it be more equipment, would it be, what are some of the wish lists that you would have for us?
Um, I didn't really come in with a, with a wish list in mind, I just said things must be going well, if it, I guess.
Yeah, guys. Yeah, it is.
More, more bus drivers.
Uh, yeah, 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 that would be, that, yeah, that, that would be nice.
Yeah, much bus drivers? Okay. Okay.
Transportation has been something that we've been, yeah, we've been working on, and I've had the early conversations, and I guess my, something that would be towards the top of wish, list item for me is I, I, today, to send a team to a game, we didn't have transportation, we borrowed, Situip has a brand new twenty nineteen Ford passenger van, and they've allowed me to use it from time to time as a good neighbor to help us out when we're in a bind, 'cause we can't get to places, you know, and, and really, with some of the teams that we have, we wouldn't have any transportation costs, we could get them really anywhere at any time, so, in the process of just doing my research, so I can then present that to see if that's something, but-
So we could maybe lease a van, in other words, it could fit fifteen people in it versus a school bus that, you know, half the, it's half full.
Yeah, like-
I think though, that, that has been an initial discussion with Michael, and Michael's not here, so-
Yeah.
So leasing a new-
Not lease necessarily, just transportation in general, so, and the vans and the smaller groups, I think that's just the beginning stages.
Yeah, very much so.
I'd hate to start talking about things that haven't been discussed with him in the room, where it involves finances.
Yeah, 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 and I, I have a lot of research to do before, yeah.
Right.
Well, it's a, it's a good start anyways, to get the test, if we can help solve the problem, we, and the run this, we'll be helped.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions? I mean, I went, I went through each team, so I, I'm comfortable. You guys have any other questions you wanna talk about?
Thank you, as a non-sports person, to understand your financial statement is a grateful word.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Steve, thank you.
Thanks, good luck this spring.
Thanks, they're doing great, we'll see, hopefully, I'll be back in the summer to brag about a few state championships.
Yeah.
And as you know, Steve-
The last thing is he couldn't hold all the trophies that he had.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, nice to meet you.
As you know, Steve's status has moved from interim to-
I was gonna ask.
We own it.
All right, all right, congratulations, thank you, very lucky, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great, thank you. On that note, if I can sidetrack a little bit, Steve has signed a three-year contract as athletic director, which is great, the hiring is, is going fast forward. As you know, I sent the email out, both the Blackboard, we have finished negotiations with Brian Scott as the principal of the high school. We can discuss details later with you, one, very excited, who's given a standard ovation at the faculty meeting, so great endorsement there.
Excellent.
He is currently working towards getting the committee together to find his own replacement, and Dr. Sullivan is working very hard to get his replacement, so we are working on that.
Okay.
But the next item is also a discussion that we had previously, and it does, does not impact the bottom line to the budget for next year, and that is a full-time assistant principal to the principal of the middle school. I think with the hiring and so on, it, it doesn't budge out, but I, that does need to be a vote, we did vote, or you did vote initially, to separate the middle school and the high school into its own identity, and so that we now have a position for middle school principal, which Dr. Sullivan is working on, regardless.
Still, yep, we're still close.
So we're heading closer to the finish line on that, but once we finish that, we would like to open the position for assistant principal full-time. It's not full-time actually, it's two hundred and, two hundred, two hundred and twenty days, it's not a complete, around-
And full-time is how many days?
It's two thirds.
Two, six, three.
What vacation, the thing is, it's not a vacation, it's, it's the school year plus twenty days, as opposed to going through the whole summer, which is, with vacations and administrators, it's two thirty-five, or two forty.
Does that affect the point of the FTE?
No, it's still a one FTE, it's just a shorting work year.
And that'll be outlined in the contract?
Yes, it's outlined in the contract, see it in the contract. We have the, the template of what needs to be in the contract, that's something we discussed with school, and as far as, okay, I'll look at it, so it's a one FTE, we do have a, a job description, I was-
I was gonna ask, yeah.
It is a one T, a one?
One point O.
One point O, yeah.
FTE is full-time.
Full-time.
So, a half-time person is a point five, and a full-time person's one point O.
Now, is there a job, I didn't get a copy of the job description.
Uh, no, because we've not decided.
We didn't, we haven't voted on the voting.
Well, um-
Where would we be voting?
Okay, so, so we're voting on the creation of a new position of assistant principal for the middle school, several meetings ago, we voted, the committee voted to separate the high school and the middle school, 'cause it was a conjoined entity. Um, and we voted to create the position of principal of the middle school, and you have to have that, you have a, a separate entity.
Mm-hmm.
And Louise and, and, and Patrick and Michael went to, came to budget and finance, and articulated how an assistant principal would function and, and the role of that, and through some changing, changes in the budget, it's budget neutral, so there's no impact on the budget. And I recommend that they bring it to the full committee for conversation and, and a vote.
Superintendent Davis, is there, are there assistant principals for the, for Osmond and Dearell?
There's not an assistant principal title, there is an assistant to the principal, which is a stipended position of a staff member who is in charge when the principal is not available in the building.
What, what is the functional difference? Why would we want the assistant principal title as opposed to what we do already?
This one, initially, the biggest part is, we really need a, um, appeal process for discipline, which becomes much more complicated in a middle school.
Mm-hmm.
So that a principal would automatically have an appeal process to the superintendent, which is really not a great way to do business. Uh, the assistant principal in middle school also deals with more of the legal aspects, the more difficult discipline that goes with older children, that's, that's a big one. Um, there is also more evaluations for teachers at the middle school, there's a larger staff.
Team leader.
The team leaders, they're also teams, so that the assistant principal would basically keep the instruction of the various teams in grade six, seven and eight on a, a good alignment, where that's not necessary at the elementary school.
Generally speaking, there are more demands in the middle school than there are in the elementary level.
Well said.
Yeah.
Um, let me ask, can I just ask another question? Why is there, are there no budget implications?
Typically, well, we've separated the middle and high school, so that the hiring process for some of the staff that we put in the budget, we actually hired lower. Uh, also, the, the salary for the new administrators are different than what we had budgeted in, in the budget itself. The biggest impact is that at the middle school, with the population and the teams, we found that attrition happened, so we have a science teacher that asked to move to being a STEM teacher. We were keeping the team together to fill that bucket that's coming up, that, because we have a bump coming up, but a science teacher that asked for, for transfer, we have a math teacher that transferred to the high school, we have, um, math, science?
English, but part-time.
An English position that has asked to go part-time, so when we did that, we looked at the numbers and said, really, rather than trying to keep our employees, we no longer need to do that, we have two openings that we can do part-time with, and an English teacher who's asked to go part-time. So, the social studies teacher also teaches a good part of the time in a seminar, in his, in executive functioning, so we need that, but we can have social studies, science, social studies and English, which is a team, be half a team, so we don't need the full day. That freed up half a salary for four people, that's where that money transferred in and out, and it became budget neutral because of that.
Okay, it really did.
Um, not because we wanted to cut jobs or anything else, it just-
It's numbers, it's-
It kinda ha- it kinda happened simultaneously.
Kismet, it just, we were fortunate that at this point, those things fell into place, and so the discussion was, if it, since we had budgeted for full-time, and we can do half, there's your money.
Okay, so, and, and, and those vacancies that created that sort of budgetary void, we're not sacrificing any offerings?
Mm-hmm.
None, none at all.
No offerings.
And we had always talked about keeping the, the purity of the teams, so that we have some very small classes going into grade eight, so it's one, one good team, we lose some students going six to seven, because that's when private schools start, that's a full team, and grade six is our last big bubble, and we need a team, and then some, there's our half.
Okay.
And it's, nobody loses a position, nobody loses a job, that's what we want, and it's kinda complicated.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
There's some important things, as you go back, for the same reason we had lost positions at the elementary, because of that numbers, we would be in that position at the middle school, and now we don't have to.
Right, right, because of declining enrollment.
Okay, okay, that makes sense, yeah, for sure.
And this is all part of the, the bigger strategy that Superintendent Davis started when she became the superintendent, and Dr. Sullivan has, has actively participated in, is a real study of the middle school, because it was ki- it was ki- it was kind of floundering, without an identity, without focus, and Dr. Sullivan brought in the New England League of Middle Schools, and they did a complete assessment of middle schools and made recommendations, and we all have, you know, signed off on it, and are executing everything towards completion of, of, of those recommendations, and, and this was, this was one of them.
This is a very exciting change, both Dr. Sullivan and I are development school people, so, uh, this, this is, this is the good deal.
This is really- Yeah, this is gonna create a lot of energy, a lot of consistency, um, really, I think will be, you'll see it as a, as a real shift moment for us.
Sounds great, okay.
Yes, can I, also, we ever got a, can we see a job description once there is one?
Certainly.
Yeah, the other thing is, well, I do, but I mean, that's not a-
We can send it out, we can send it out after, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no worries, yeah, yeah. And the other thing is, as we were speaking about not only separating the, uh, middle school and the, not only principal, but a lot of the areas is we should look at facilities and how we can really separate the facilities between the middle school, because right now-
Dr. Sullivan leaned over to me earlier and said, we need to walk the middle school tomorrow, so yes.
Yeah, and I, but I'd like to, to some day, to all of us to walk the school, because I think there's a, and I'm glad, and I appreciate for both of you, having children in the middle school, that you've taken this, because I think, out of all the schools, I think the middle school needs the most focus, and I'm glad to see it.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Not because my kids are in there, I'm just saying, because I think it's, it's relevant to what, it's, it's 'cause, it's, it's the only school that doesn't have its own identity, I mean, Dearell has its own identity, Osmond has its own identity, and, and it's kind of been a middle, high school, and to see you guys work on that is, is, it's, it's a breath of fresh air, and is, and I'm as excited as you guys.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, vote for the assistant principal at the middle school.
I'd like a second motion.
Okay, um, it's a new position, so roll call, please.
Hi, Paul Curry.
I, Craig, call.
Hi, Ash, the three.
Hi, Eleanor, I adjourned.
I could get up and cheer right now, so thank you very much.
Yes, we're excited as well.
Regardless of whether I'm here or not, my heart is in middle school, and this is definitely just such a great beginning to something.
This will make a huge difference, it's a really important commitment, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and I plan to tour Washington, I think, I'm a tour guide. I wanted to say, Patty, before I go, we did have this, this year and last year, the Grand Canyon trips, which were really nice trips.
You have that attitude, yeah.
What grade? Eighth grade, for, yeah, our middle school, uh, population, and they're doing it next year, they gave- But so, I have an incoming sixth grader, so he would be able to go maybe two years. Yeah, and they did a, if you can look at one of the, the last week's school committee, it was pretty, there's a lot of energy, and the kids had a great time.
I'm excited. I'd love to talk to you about some more about both Washington and trips in general.
A trip to our nation's capital would be very important, very important, and I think Dr. Sullivan seems very open to it, so.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I came from a middle school, we had, we brought three hundred and fifty kids.
Civics, civics, you know?
So did I, and I was the two I got last.
So we just, we just have to find, we just, we just have to get someone excited in the middle school to take it on and support them in doing it.
And they do so much, it's just-
If I can say, as far as trips are concerned, when I first came on board, trips were coordinated, so we weren't touching the same families for trips, so I think that at some point, that may be necessary for the middle school in particular, high school's a different animal, but in the middle school, we really need to look at where they go and when, and- Well, you know, we cut down the camp, um, I used to go to Camp Wain, we cut that down, you know, Camp Wain, so it's been, been a couple days, and then they go on some trips, so it would be, yeah, I, I took my three children down, you know.
Forornia.
Camp Wain. Yeah, that's a fun one. Yeah.
So it would be, yeah, I, I took my three children down, you know, and, 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 great, thank you. It's a good conversation. Thank you very much, uh, the other thing you have in your back, in your backpack, in your packet- Uh, the other thing you have in your back, in your backpack, in your packet, is the draft of the Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan. And just a little bit of background, the template is not original, it is actually the mandates from the state, and it follows that. Uh, what happened with this particular document is, we had something of a plan. Uh, the policy, the subcommittee on policies did revamp the bully, what was, looked like a policy, really was a policy and a plan, and anything else you wanted to put in there too. So that's been cleaned up quite a bit, and this uh is my doing of, of trying to clean up what we already had and trying to stay true to the template and recommendations of the state. Many schools just take this and adopt it, and that's it. This went to the Safe School Committee, as we talked about the last time we met, and there are four aspects of this that were recognized as needing some work. There needs some specificity in some of these places and some concrete things, so it isn't a completed, finished, let's put it in a book and forget about it kind of document. Um, it really should be organic at this point, and next year, um, the, hopefully, Safe School Committee leadership as well, will look at this and, and revamp it and revise it. It's also a recommendation by the state that this is reviewed, reviewed annually anyway. So we look at it, and it's getting clearer and clearer, it's something that we did not have before, it's a big step. But this is just, um, it doesn't need a vote or anything else, it was really a discussion piece that this was given to you, I believe. I don't think it needs a vote. Am I right?
No, yeah, no, I, I, I don't, it ta- it doesn't need a vote, but I, I would like to have some conversation.
Yeah, I would like to have discussion around this.
Yeah, okay, so. Sorry, Jen, go ahead.
All right, so, um, I have questions about this, and I also have, um, concerns that we just get, because our policy says we need something on the website. And I don't know whether we consider adopting this, uh, maybe, I mean, I looked it over. I'm just, we're, I would like in the next round of the adoption of handbooks, and I just, I'm, I'm really anxious to get this up on the website.
Yes.
Nice to meet you.
And we wanted to present it to you first.
Okay.
So the, hopefully, it gets onto the website, it also gets into the employee handbook.
Yes.
And the district handbook.
Yeah.
Or families, so that it, it needs to appear as many places as we can.
It's also something we inform families about each year, right, to make sure they know where it is.
But it is not currently, it, it needs to be prominent on the website. Just so you know, our policy asks that it be on, so it really should be there. And also, I think, we, in our policy, we have to update this annually, so every other year. So, I, the state says every year, but I, I, I guess the writing or whatever we put up should be really be a. I don't know whether it's worth to go through some of the thoughts I have tonight on, on this, or whether this is something that should be handled, uh, with safe schools or leadership. We have a lot of changeover in leadership right now. I don't know what we wanna do, but, um.
Well, I'd like to talk about your concerns.
The handbook, the handbook review is coming up, and I just don't wanna go into the year without this up on the website and in the handbook.
What, what is the status of this, I mean, i- is this the proposed final product?
It's still in draft form.
So I think it makes sense then, um, just men to address your concerns, so that they can be related to the.
I'm just concerned, yeah, well, I don't think.
I think it's close.
It's close.
Yeah, I think, I think we should review it as a leadership meeting.
Yeah.
It, it's pretty close to final, it's up for discussion, it always is, and I, I guess I, I take that, it's an organic document. It can, it should always be reviewed, changed, questions and revised.
Yeah, but, but I think, I think, I think.
But it's just.
Close to final. I, I think we need, I, yes, everything that we do is subject to review, change and revision, but this has been a topic, I know, the policy subcommittee for quite some time. We are negligent in not having it up on the website. Um, the handbooks are being redone from a school council perspective, to be presented next month, to Jen's point, so even if it's not perfect, and not every I is dotted and every T is crossed, it has to get in there.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, I, I think Craig just suggests, let's list the Jen points and go through them, so that you hear them.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I don't wanna keep having to keep wait till the next leadership meeting, till the next Safe School Committee meeting, till the next this meeting, it's gotta get done.
Yeah, you need to get it up.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I can just go through and just give, cause I think that, the good thing is, I think we do a lot.
Mm-hmm.
And we just have to let people know what we do. So, um, it, my notes are really just where the plan says we'll do this, just to kind of put in what we do. So, in par- um. Oh, I, I wanted to know, uh.
So, so are you on page one?
Page one. Um, does this, we, we wrote on this, right? Do we vote on it, or does leadership vote on it?
There really is a tough one about this.
It's not a vote, it's not a vote.
It's not a policy.
It's not a policy, it's not a vote by protocol, so it supports the policy, and we don't vote on it.
It's not, it's not a vote by protocol, so it supports the policy, and we don't vote on it.
It's a prevent, it's a prevention plan, right?
It's a procedure.
So I just, it says, so in paragraph two, resources including curricula and training programs. So our curricula around this is responsive classroom, right? Can we just put that in?
I'm sorry, I don't know where you are.
What, what's that?
Page one.
One B, I'm page one.
Be four lines up from the bottom of this process assistance, or where are we? Plan services, what you, go ahead, I don't.
This process.
This process assistance.
It's four.
It was a good question, but I don't, I'm just trying to find it in the, in the.
Fourth, fourth line up from the bottom of that, section B.
Fourth line up from the bottom.
Including curricula, so what Jen is saying, can we include exactly what that curricula is, the name?
Yeah, it's, it's more than just that, that's part of it at the elementary level.
But can we just put it in there?
Yeah.
Can we just put responsive classroom, and then you just list out everything you did?
That would be pages long.
Are you talking about from a programmatic?
Yeah, that, all right.
Well, what about, yeah, to her point, what's, you're doing resources, right?
That was the. The curriculum and what we have in the curri- in the district was the Excel sheet, that was only three pages long, on what we do when we initially started, what we do.
Well, maybe we don't need that level of detail in this, but we could just.
I guess, what I would wanna know is, what's the ramifications if somebody's a bully?
That's in here.
That's in here, where, where would that be, exactly?
That's in the process.
All right, well, can we get to that, Paul?
Yeah, no, sorry.
Can we follow through?
Uh, I just think that we put what.
Well, I was trying to add to Jen's point, what should be in here.
Yeah.
If we put in what the resource, resources are, are recording, and they do change all the time. Uh, if we put the curriculum, though, when we did an assessment of where in the district we were working on certain resources, it was quite long, it would be pages. Okay, so, excuse us, I'll just quickly go through.
And this has to do with assessing, assessing.
Assessing it, not identifying it.
Correct, yeah, so.
Cause it could e- it could evolve every, every year, there could be.
Well, I think it will, it'll evol- it will, it will evolve, and we could also look specifically with responsive classroom at their end-up leaning, a branch of it, cause they have a very specified.
Yeah. Your other.
So, so, yeah, some of these, maybe we just leave them general, like gas. So in part C.
Yep.
Number three, creating a process for recording, tracking, incident reports and for assessing information related to targets or aggressors. Are we doing this?
Yes, we have a flow chart that goes through that, and it's also moving.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
This one, though?
And also tracking.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is on the website, yeah.
And also tracking, that's the flow chart from process, but also tracking incident reports has to be updated to Aspen, too, yeah.
You did.
Oh, it's in the Aspen.
Well, that's where we.
It will be in Aspen, okay.
Also, there are bullying reports that are handed, both, that come to central office.
Yeah, I just, it's the tracking.
Yes.
Right now, it's high pass, but it'll be, it's, Aspen does a great job of that.
Planning for the ongoing professional development that is required by law. So, um, at the beginning of the year, and, um, I know we spoke a little bit about this, and thinking about professional development. Do you do the civil rights training at the beginning of the year?
Yes.
Is, is bullying a part of that civil rights professional development, or?
Yes, fifty. Not s- not, not specifically, um, the bullying protocol should be reviewed by all principals, though, so that staff know exactly what to do when a, a bullying incident happens. That should happen annually, so that's something you can expect will happen annually.
But what, but are we doing this for planning, that's required by law, I mean, are we doing?
So, so the, the professional development that, that's required by law is that we, we would offer professional development to staff regarding bullying intervention, and we do that, we've done that through responsive classroom, we've done that through our social-emotional learning, um.
But does everybody get that's a question?
Everyone is, everyone, everyone has had work this year on something that will reduce bullying, absolutely. And we can be a little bit more, um, pointed with making sure we review processes. That came out of the Safe Schools Committee, that we, we noted that we could do a better job of making sure that everyone knew exactly what happens when the bullying report is, is, is initiated, and how it follows through the process, so, yeah, we do it, and we can do it better.
That's kind of number seven, because it says develop, new and revise, so, so it, it provo- the plan in and of itself provides for a constant review.
Correct.
I think that, when the Safe School report, I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, I feel like that, the civil rights training and bullying, like, to have it just done once you.
There's, yeah.
And know that everybody heard.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's. Yeah, according to the recommendations of the Safe School Subcommittee on Bullying, the element for going forward and working was the provision for ongoing professional development. The recommendation was the need for specific plan of action done annually regularly for in-class activity base and reporting issues. Because when the Safe School went through this, they did the checklist that goes with it, and that is one of the recommendations. So you're right to, to focus in on that, but that was also very clear, as that's where it's going forward.
So there's, there's professional development, and how to deal with, and combat, and still, and what, how to prevent bullying. And then there's a professional development that tells people what the bullying law is, how we define bullying, what you do when a bullying, and all, both of those are done, and will be done thoroughly going forward. So that's something we've gripped on to, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I'd just like to see that sheet that's completely, no, everybody did this, check, 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 check.
Okay. Sure, yeah.
Like, is that done? Like, when we started the school year, you know, because the year can get away from you, like, I just, just make sure.
Yeah, but everybody has to go, everyone's contractually obligated to go to professional development, right?
Right, we, but to, to answer your, your question, yes, we can do that, we will, because we do that with a lot of other things that we're talking about, you know, something in front of you with the new teachers, something we can, uh, so yes, it's, yes.
And then number ten, it just says updating the plan regularly, I just, I know that our policy is like every other year, I don't know whether instead of just regularly, we get sort of more specifics around that.
I was gonna try and find the answer myself on my phone, but rather than being on the phone, I'm just gonna ask the question, and I apologize if it comes from a lack of information, I'm trying really hard to read all the materials and be prepared.
No, that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, this, to me, seems like it's, which, of course, we should be concerned with the well-being of the target. What are we doing aside from punishing aggressors?
Right, and that was, right, the recommendation two, from the subcommittee,
Page five.
was that, a- added above and beyond this, page five, that lists here, was that.
Count some other services?
Clear procedures for restoring a sense of safety for a target and assessing that the target's needs for protection. The recommendation was, the requirement of in-house or outside counseling is offered, but there was a big discussion about, we do the punitive or we do the protection, but how do we go one step beyond and, and learn from it for the aggressor, but also create a, a sense of well-being for the target? So, it, it's how do we restore a sense of self-res- of respect and mutual agreement? So that was a big discussion, we had two students, one in particular, who stayed on the road, who were very articulate about the student's viewpoint and what they felt. We needed to go beyond what we do in the process and, and the flow chart. Like, okay, so you're done with me, but I'm going out on my own, and what's in it for me once you've resolved the bullying situation? How do I know I get that sense of self-worth and self-well-being?
To restore, to.
But you're, you're talking about something different.
From a procedural standpoint, it's, it's our responsibility to sort of outline, uh, at the bottom, page four and page five, where it talks about counseling services for, it, it actually says, or referral to public services for student aggressors.
Right.
Targets and family members of those students, and it talks about identifying resources, counseling, and other services, um.
Yeah, we've had discussions, particularly with Brian, who handled quite a few of, of the incidents with discipline at the middle high school, and Keri Agashi, who's again at the middle school, about when there is, um, discipline, is there learning?
Right.
You know, particularly in a middle school, that has to be, it has to be a learning experience, it can't just be purely punitive.
Mm-hmm.
If you're following Worcester right now, they're trying to get, is it Worcester? Worcester Lowell, trying to get out of this strictly punitive expelled and rather a learning. And those have been discussions that we've had on, on different issues, primarily on substance, on usually, you know, you get vaping, for example.
Mm-hmm.
There's, there's suspension, but now there's also, um, Dependence High School, Independence High School, where we can send students sort of a rehab to come back, so that we don't just do the punitive. So that's been a discussion, it's a process, and this has to be a process to in everything we do. And I think that socially-emotional, uh, focus that we've had underlies, what are we, how are we helping? These are children, let's keep that in mind, so how do we help?
Yeah.
And you've also supported that financially through the hiring, you know, adjustment counselor that'll work at Osgood and Deerhill, like, that'll be part of that.
Right. And hope, and both, um, Dr. Sullivan and myself have been, um, part of middle schools, and that is always part of the focus in a middle school, cause it's not only the time when, uh, we set them on fire for learning, but it's also as far as teaming concerned, the team of teachers who know these children really start asking questions. Um, I've had discussions about how many times does that student go to the bathroom? Which sounds, not because I think he has a, an infection, a sore, or a kidney issue, but because what is making that student uncomfortable about not staying in the classroom? So, much of that is taken care of, of the learning at that point, so that's very valuable to do that, and the assistant principal will help. But, um, and it is certainly something that all our documents need to, I think it's a good trend in education when we start looking at remembering that although they may be going out into an adult world, they're still children, so.
So a great, it's a great focus for our leadership team, too, as we knew before, to make sure that the safety of our kids are preserved,
Yeah. Make a good point.
and that we're helping kids who make mistakes, and we're helping them, um, restore their way, um, as we all, we all.
So what I kind of did with this, is this is a good template, this is the one from the state, right?
It starts with the state, yes.
It's, so, I just like circled, like, will identify, will develop, will, and just, just do it. Do each of the steps, I think, and I, I think, I think if you just, we went through that, I think we're doing many of these things, we just have to have it written down so that the public knows.
Do you wanna go through that, and just give us steps, oh, where's somewhere?
Well, I did, so all I did was, um, so like on page five, paragraph one.
Mm-hmm.
The district will develop recommendations and action steps to fill resource and, and service gaps. So, so that's stuff we're doing, we're looking at hiring and adjustment counselor, we're looking at these things. Just think, and paragraph two, the plan will identify the availability of culturally related linguistically appropriate resources. So, just list what we do.
Mm-hmm.
And then further down in that paragraph, in addition, the plan will identify staff and service providers. I think it would be very helpful to know, you know, what, what staffing we're providing to support kids.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you probably wanna say something like, um. Yeah, you probably want to say something like, may include but not limited to.
Yeah.
So folks don't think that they were, you know, there are many, many, many things we do in this regard. You just don't want to limit yourself to just a certain few things we do.
And number four says we'll establish referral protocol.
Yeah.
Oh, you already kind of have, so.
We do that.
We we have that.
We have it. So so that was it. The district has established a referral protocol.
And we have interface as well.
Right, so I think though, for me, the challenge is is that this is a district-wide document and that the resources by building by age group, the staff by building by age group, are gonna ebb and flow based on the on the population of kids. And, you know, I think it's different at every level, and this could become a hundred pages if we start listing out everything. Because because we list out everything that's relative to bullying, but it it also overlaps with social emotional learning, and it also overlaps with substance abuse, and it also, do you hear what I'm saying?
Do, yeah.
It's all kind of interrelated.
I mean, I think folks should should have an expectation that we're going to, you know, provide provide resources for targets, provide resources for families, provide resources for aggressors. We're gonna handle it in our curriculum. We're gonna handle it in professional development. We're gonna be communicating with the families. All the parts of the law that we are obviously bound to do, and we, and it's it's like paramount to do.
I guess listing it out in the handbook so that parent, if they have a problem, can go to page, you know, whatever in the handbook and feel maybe a little sense of relief that, oh, okay, these are the people in place, and here's the process.
Sure. Specific to bullying or in general?
You just like, we have a safety plan where everybody is listed as to who does what.
And that's in the handbook?
Yes.
Yeah.
The other thing to remember is this is a plan, not a resource book, so it really is more of a template on what we do. It's not, because if we start in, if we start infusing all the resources, the curriculum, this will be a major.
Well, it's showing what we're bound to.
Should we vote this in?
It isn't vote.
It's not a vote?
It's just.
It's not a vote.
But I think you could, as Superintendent Demus said, this is a a living document that will never continue to improve. And it's going to be a constant conversation with our leadership team and constantly communicated, I can't remember what it is.
Constantly updating as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that this is something we did not really have.
Right.
And this is a big step to begin. It's a good foundation, so it still needs work. It still needs work.
Which is why there's, which still needs work.
Um, by the way.
Yeah. Ms. Madden, have you finished with what you wanted to?
Yes.
So I have a few points that I wanted to address on it.
Yep.
Okay. I have six issues that I wanted to address on it.
Yep.
First is, obviously, this plan, this plan is, the content is prescribed by the statute thirty-seven oh.
Yep.
And I think that in reviewing this, while Superintendent Demus, you indicated that that we were working off a template that had been provided based on the requirements of thirty-seven oh, I've noticed some omissions that I think need to be included in there from a statutory content perspective.
Okay, good stuff. Mm-hmm. Yep.
And so the first is thirty-seven oh, subsection D is where the the plan content is prescribed. Subsection two, Roman numeral, little Roman numeral five, calls for a range of disciplinary actions. This is basically the fifth of those ten requirements. Range of disciplinary action.
Yep.
And so that would really call for sort of specific sanctions and like I think Ms. Madden was sort of maybe referring to. You know, that needs to be in there because people know what range of disciplinary action will be considered in the case of bullying. And so that needs to be in the in the in the plan. Second, subsection, D, subsection three of thirty-seven oh, calls for the specific steps the district shall take to support vulnerable students.
Right.
This plan on page two talks about vulnerable students and identifies, of course, that important facet of the plan.
Yep.
However, it fails to identify specific steps that are gonna be taken to support those students that are deemed especially vulnerable as the the statute requires. So those two things are required by statute, and I don't think they're in the plan as 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 it stands. And I don't think that's any fault of anyone, as you noticed, as you just noted, it's new. And this was taken off a template that was probably provided to us, but that does, I think, two important features that need to be included.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep.
Second, in article or section, Roman numeral five of the plan, section B, that's the responding to reports.
Right.
Subsection one is safety. I think that one thing, I think that's a great, I think that's well well drafted. I think that one thing we could consider putting in there is something that to the effect that it'll be executed, you know, with discretion or in a manner that seeks to maintain the anonymity or 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 maybe just avoid drawing unwanted attention to reporters or or targets or any witnesses that are that are, you know, affected by this. So in other words, the the plan calls for them to, you know, look at bus schedules or class schedules or lunch table, you know, whatever. But in doing so, obviously, we have to understand that, you know, we could inadvertently draw attention to the students that are being sort of accommodated in that way. So I, you know, I think that it's important to note that that's gonna be taken into consideration. I think as educators, you naturally would.
No, but I think you're right, because you can pump up that word. It says the principal that doesn't even implement appropriate strategies for protecting from bullying or retaliation.
Right. Right. Yep. Right, yeah, second pair. Right.
Student who has reported, we could and we should list out the importance of maintaining confidentiality, because we have to do that with everything.
Include that. That's a good point.
So I think, yeah, so it's just a, you know, suggestion.
Just a suggestion.
And and then we note those specific, and so there's two paragraphs in that section. The first one sort of notes that including but not limited to language of, you know, specific things that can be done. And I just touched on a couple of the the buses, buses and classes.
Right.
When it goes to the reporters, the next the next paragraph down, there maybe should be, you know, a sentence that says, you know, in the manner as discussed described above or something like that, the specific steps that would be taken. And if there are any steps that would be, that would specifically relate to reporters as opposed to targets or witnesses, then then maybe that should be included. But I I think that it sort of just identifies them and stops short of identifying the exact ways or manners in which those people will be protected, like the first paragraph does. So maybe just refer to that language or repeated or something like that. Moving on to my third issue, same, Roman numeral five, section B still, but subsection two, when we're notifying others, third parties.
Mm-hmm.
A, that is, what is that, parents or notice to parents or guardians?
Right.
Perhaps. Now, I know that notice requirements are governed by the CMR there that's cited. But the CMR, I think, is is a little bit broad, and maybe it would be important to include the consideration that we omit specific names of any alleged aggressors or targets or witnesses other than obviously that parent or guardian's own child. So, you know, you're gonna report this instance to, I call up Ms. Coliri to report that her son or daughter is, has been, you know, alleged to be a target of bullying. We're looking into it. These are what this is what we do. These are the resources we're offering. We go through the plan, refer to the plan. They are obviously necessarily going to ask who is, what who is doing it. I'm sure there are confidentiality concerns that you already as educators have. I'm just ensuring that, and 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 Dr. Sullivan, this might be one of those things where you you would inherently do this.
Right.
But I I I think it's important, we don't, we don't tell anyone names, you know, we're not gonna be creating, you know, problems.
I think that's protected by the law.
Yeah.
But if you have it in here, then it's something easily referenced by the parent who's not getting the information they want.
It is, and actually, the CMR doesn't expressly provide for it. So.
Right. Right, so you can say, you're not supposed to get it.
But it it may be superfluous, but I wanted to point it out for consideration, okay?
I I just inserted in my own notes, Craig. I inserted the word only at in the second line, after the word aggressor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So promptly notify the parents or guardians of the target, the student aggressor only.
Um, so just remember, though, we're bound to tell law officials about bullying, and in that regard, we do not protect the confidentiality.
Well. Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm getting that next.
Okay, okay.
I'm just saying, that's a good suggestion.
Okay, okay.
Be careful when you, that's why something you can put in, I'm not disagreeing with you. I think it's a good suggestion, but you can put in too much there.
Yep. Yeah. Too much, and yeah, yeah.
And then what you're doing is you're telling parents that you won't give information, and actually, you have to.
Yep. Yeah, okay.
Absolutely, and and certainly, please feel free to disagree with me. That's why I'm raising this point, because you're in a great position to disagree with me.
In those. No.
So moving to the sort of that, that was, I think, a good, you know, talking point to to move on to the next issue that, which is notice to law enforcement. So this is a, this is a major issue because bullying is, you know, it's become really problematic and in the school system. It to the point where where, and we've seen, you know, well-known cases, criminal cases, where young people are prosecuted for for things that have become serious and have led to very grave circumstances. But there are situations that that may or may not seem criminal to a layperson, even an educator, where if reported to law enforcement, that train starts leaving the station and there's really no stopping it. And for a young person, it's a very important consideration, and I'm not, not for for second suggesting that that's, that you're not sensitive to that. But I think, so if you look at the CMR that discusses the notice requirements to law enforcement agency, it specifically states that that CMR shall not be interpreted to require to record or report it to law enforcement agency in situations where bullying can be dealt with internally. And and actually specifically states that in making the determination of whether notification to law enforcement is appropriate, the school principal or superintendent shall feel free to use whatever resources they deem appropriate. Now, I think that in a situation like this, it's very appropriate to talk to legal counsel. So if you are within a, within a certain timeframe, so within six hours within that same school day, so that we're not worrying about, you know, things dragging on. But how do I, attorney so-and-so, you know, we wanted to discuss this, we have the situation. What is your, is your opinion that this is criminal and this should be reported to law enforcement or not? I think that a qualified legal opinion on that should be rendered before we notify the police, because there are rights of, even though it's very serious, there there, what is equally serious are criminal actions against young people, juveniles, who have no no record. So I think that additional consideration should be thought of before we run to the police. Not saying you would hit the panic button, but I think that's a, that's a, that's an important consideration.
I hear that. I can match you to the right.
Yeah.
Well, just the, the idea of a reasonable basis, I think, is the key term there. And, you know, one of the things that we're always schooled on is that you wanna make sure that there isn't a crime at hand here. So that's when you do lean on law enforcement to help you with that, and often, law enforcement will look at it and determine that it could be a potential crime, whether it be a hate crime or an act that just, it reacts up to the point where it's a crime. And then we would step back. We can, we can do a concurrent investigation, but we would step back and take advice from the police on that. So sometimes we would potentially consult a legal, a legal opinion on it. But I think it's important to remember that we have to make sure that we're working with the police so that they can guide us sometimes when we hit these scenarios. And that we're not, we're not making a guess that something is a criminal when in fact it very well may be and that we need the law enforcement to help us determine it is.
And that's why I was just thinking.
And vice versa.
Right.
And vice versa, correct. But I mean, it's the, so it's, I've I've always believed as a principal, when I was a principal, that that you're working with superintendents, that that idea of reasonable is really determined somewhat by law enforcement when you get to a point where it's it's shaky.
And Patrick, is that also where the SRO is is so important in this building? Because he's on premise and he can, he can say, yeah, let's take this up, or no, let me just go talk to the kid and we'll figure it out, or?
Yes. Absolutely, to have that. That's why SROs are crucial.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that you have that that moment where you can share information in a in a confidential way that protects the kid, protects rights, make sure that we're dealing with things appropriately. So there is a give and take there. And it's a legal, and it's obviously a legal requirement of ours.
There is, right. So also.
I hear what you're saying. I don't want to.
Because once the cat's out of the bag to law enforcement, sometimes things have to be, have to happen when certain information has come to them.
Correct.
Yeah.
And and that's why I suggest that maybe a buffer would be legal counsel, but that, you know, it's a suggestion, against, these are suggestions.
That's, that's great. Great, that's great.
Right, and our legal counsel would basically say, make sure you rest our RO in house.
Usually, yeah.
Which is really where it goes. And there have been times when we do that. For the most part, we really look at our MOU with law enforcement and what their roles are within the school.
Okay.
And that's that halfway protection that you're talking about.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
That's great. That's, that's great.
Actually, it's been very helpful in many ways to touch basically the SRO and say, I want you to know I'm doing this. And that way, it buffers both, and it's worked very well, so.
Okay, all right, that's, thank you very much. Fifth, we're almost there. This is the penultimate issue. Five, B three, so now we're moving on from subsection two to subsection three. This is investigation. I just think it's important to perhaps expressly note that we sort of touched on this similar issue in another section, that any interviews of any sort of entities or individuals would be expressly confidential. In other words, before they took place, you know, the interviewee would be, would have to agree that that it's incompetence and, you know.
It's it's not, though, because if it's, if it becomes a legal matter, it is given over to the authorities. So you can't, you have to be very careful when you say things are never going to be shared and are, it's confidential, but it's not necessarily something that we wouldn't have to furnish if it was deemed a criminal act.
I think I'm.
Is that really clear? Yeah.
That's a really good point, and I'm glad you brought it up. I think what I mean is, so I'm probably choosing the words. I I think during the investiga-, in other words, they're not to talk to anyone else about it. The interviewee is not to discuss it with anyone else. I'm trying to think of what it, that's, I just don't wanna cause.
To keep it, keep it, keep it confidential.
Yes.
I misunderstood. I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And I'm just gonna go out on a limb here because it's not my field, but we're talking about if we're going to share it, isn't that one's freedom of speech?
What?
To share what one knows or what one's been involved with.
Well, I thi- I think, I think what you're trying to do is you're advising them that.
You really can't, I'm sorry, I don't.
You can't, you can't cut someone's freedom of speech, but you can, what you can do, and it says right here, is make sure that they're not going to retaliate.
Right, it can be tolerate, not interrupt, not in, not disturb, but you, I don't think you can actually say you will not share.
I I think you could restrict their ability to disseminate the 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 fact that there's investigation, investigation going on, the reason why they recall to 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 speak with you.
I have a question. I think we run into issues of, these are kids. Do they tell their parents? Like.
So we're telling their parents?
We're, you're telling them.
You, we, you, we have to.
But I'm, I think, I think, I think what Craig's trying to get to is Johnny gets called into Principal Scott's office because he's been reported as picking on a kid. And what you're trying to say is Johnny shouldn't leave the office and go tell everybody about, I got called in because I was picking on Suzie. Is that?
Exactly, nor should target or witness or reporter.
Or 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 anybody else. I I think, you know, I think the adults in the situation all, you know, are on that same page.
Yeah, witnesses.
I, but I I don't know if you can, when Johnny leaves the building and he's and he's walking home, what, he can't say to the neighborhood kids, I got called into Principal Scott's office today. Right, is that, is that what you're saying?
Eleven?
There are obvious enforcement issues, I agree, but I think that, I think that at least telling them that could be an important feature. And again, these are suggestions.
For their own sake.
I think that the language is more on disturb or making someone else uncomfortable, compromising the investigation. That kind of language, I think, we can go, but just there, one cannot share. I think I'd be a little bit nervous about that.
Okay. Okay, I think that's a fair comment.
You can advise.
Yeah, you might not want to because.
But you're not, but you're not. I think you, I think the key here is retaliation.
Right.
Because that's what, that that's what can happen with with breaking confidentiality is. It could lead to a situation where someone's feeling retaliated against for saying something that was crucial to help another kid. So that's the spirit of it, but I think to Superintendent Demus's point, just the wording of what you say to someone is is important. Now, let's, let's make sure we don't retaliate and try to keep it as confidential as you can.
You make a good point in that the language would probably right not interrupt the investigative process. And I think that's what we want. We want it to be clean and clear as to what's going on without any interruption of biases or misinterpretations.
Yeah, I think, I think this is the discourse I'm looking for on it. I I I haven't suggested I have the perfect solution, but I, yes.
No, I think you make a good point.
And I, I, I haven't suggested I have the perfect solution, but I, yes, this is the sort of ideas I think that I'm, I'm, I'm trying to.
If you say it, you, you, you make, you can make it clear without saying, you, you, you know, no retaliation, that's important.
That would be good language.
On page eleven, that is addressed.
Retaliation?
Yes.
No, no, I know that, but I, but just to get it to.
I, I like the fact that that's something that we should be cognizant, that somewhere in the language of this document should state that one should be aware, uh, of sharing information that might compromise the investigation process or, uh, the biases toward people. I think something along that language would be very valuable, I agree.
Exactly. And I think that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a good, uh, compromise. Um, and just to sort of, I don't wanna take too much time, so the last issue, um, very minor thing, um, and you may have a similar position to this, uh, as we did on the, uh, notice to law enforcement. But in, um, five B four, these are determination subsection, um, so just the next section down. Um, there is a section that discusses whether or not, um, if there's a staff member as the aggressor. Um, there is language in there and let me just refer to it really quickly, um.
What pages are some kind of?
This is page nine.
Page nine, no.
Okay.
This is, um, uh, five B four determinations, this is under, uh, that, that number two, under four. Um, this is the first para- full paragraph under two, starting when a member of school staff is.
Yep, got it, yep.
Um, I'm just, uh, I, I, I really think that in cases like that, we're, we're gonna, there, there's gonna be, um, obviously termination, contractual implications with that employee. And I think that, um, legal counsel should be discussed in that scenario and I think it should be like a mandatory part of it because, uh, it's very important that that's handled from the get-go, especially when there's, you know, um, the collective bargaining unit or a union or something like that.
That language is in the employee handbook.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a specific language as to exactly the conduct of an employee.
Point well taken, yep, that makes sense, okay, all right, good.
Yeah.
That is there.
That's it from me.
Thank you, very valuable.
Thank you.
Both, both of you are excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
And like I said, this is a work, this is a work.
Yeah, it's really, well, it's a really great discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it is on, uh, such a critically important issue. So our, our action point on this is, so that we don't keep it as a work in progress additive item, is that these corrections will be, or suggestions will be looked at and incorporated.
Yeah.
This will get cleaned up a little bit, this will get into the handbooks and we'll get it on the website. So it's May the fifteenth and the handbooks will be seen in June.
I tried my darn just to write it all, did, did somebody catch, I wanna make sure we have all the.
Yeah, and I, I think Craig.
Tracy did.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but.
They were all great comments, so.
Yeah.
Craig, if, if you wouldn't mind just summarizing to Patrick only and Louise on, you know, together.
I actually plan on meeting with them in the near, near future, so.
Okay, because you're an incredibly fast talker and it's amazing, but it is hard to take notes, so.
I speak the language.
The court's not interested in it and I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, and I never, I never, I'm never.
I, 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 they were really good point, as were Jennifer's.
I'm a slow talker, slow lady, so.
You're very specific as to where to find it, which is very.
I am trying to, and, and every time, I was getting late and that's why I knew I was gonna personally meet with, with both of you. So that's why I was just sort of trying to mention it so we can get the, this conversation started, that's all.
Okay. Yep, right.
But I did forget that everything's being transcribed and that's, that's, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Wait a second, I, so we do keep a follow-up list, so we could put this on the follow-up list? What do you think?
Yes.
We, we weren't very good with our follow-up list last year, but.
Yeah.
You can put it in follow-up places, several places.
Okay. Well, we probably should just start a new one, Jen.
Start a new one?
I would just start a new list.
Okay.
We, we had a follow-up list.
New chair, new follow-up list.
A new follow-up list and it just kinda kept us honest for the things that either we asked for to be answered,
It's a good adjustment, I think that's correct.
that couldn't be answered in the meeting or things that, that were asked of us that we couldn't respond to right away. And, um, we usually get to resolution on them at some point in time and sometimes things, there is no resolution, but, um, it, it's, it's a good, um, good vehicle for that.
That's good.
All right, so I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad to see this, I'm glad we have a plan to get this done.
We'll get that along.
It's been a long, long time in the works, um, and we should just, um, keep moving, keep going, keep going, okay, next, Louise.
Keep going, keep going.
The next is a gift, um, it, we have a, a large wooden table of two pieces made for a professional art studio with its dimension of eight feet by four feet by three feet tall. Um, it has brackets to be attached and can make the table sturdy and last four years. It's donated by the Thomas family, uh, they are parents to Anna and Reagan and Abby who is on the lawn. Um, anyway, we need to accept the gift.
And obviously Nina feels she can use this.
Was it donated here at the high school?
Oh, it's a great gift to the art department.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Okay.
Mo- motion, uh, do I have?
So, um, no, I, I have, the chair asked for the motion, so can I have a motion to approve the, the gift from the, uh, Thomas family of the wooden art table?
Okay. Show moved.
Second.
Art table, again, talking faster than I can write, I've fallen through.
Yeah. Hi, Paul Curry.
One moment please, one moment please.
Better do her job.
Can I have a roll, roll call vote, please?
Yes, please, uh, Paul Curry, aye.
Aye, Craig, aye.
Aye, Ashley Cleary.
Aye, Ellen Marr.
Aye, Jim Madden. Hey, were you?
Thank you, that's a great gift to our eyes.
Do you know what we're doing? It is a.
We all appreciate it.
Okay, um, so was there anything else, Louise, in the superintendent report?
Um.
Not at the moment?
Not at the moment.
Okay, so we'll move on to, uh, school committee.
I'm sorry, could I just ask for the warrant before I forget it, so?
Oh, has everyone signed the warrant?
No.
Then just pass it down. Please?
I'm just afraid to forget it.
I won't let you forget it.
Thank you.
Um, I, I'm just about, I, I, I'm sorry, I was looking at this earlier, I just, I had a question. So exactly, uh, what, uh, the, all these, what is all this again?
These are all the bills and all the invoices that, um, from, from everything, from bus transportation to athletic officials
Okay. So.
to, um, supplies, to food, to, I'm trying to read, like, legal fees, um.
Legal fees.
So by signing, we're just saying, these are the accurate figures that, that, okay.
Yes, yes.
They are actual invoices that.
They're actual invoices.
You're ac- actually authorizing payments.
Oh, I'm, I, we're authorizing payment?
Yes.
So, I mean, as, so, do I, I mean, I don't know that I feel that I have the right to sign this, 'cause I've never seen the invoices, I don't know anything about this. This happened all before I was a school committee member?
Well, it, it, it's.
It's usually like weekly, a month, or like every two days.
Yeah, so, so, the warrant, the warrant review, and so, um, typically one member of the committee, uh, reviews the, the, the invoices that get collected for our approval every two weeks. And they're literal invoices that have been vetted, that have been submitted by department heads, have been submitted by the athletic director, have been submitted by all of the people procuring services or products for the district.
Okay. Okay.
They go through the business of managers' office for vetting to make, and for account assignments so they get, um, reported to the proper cost center. And then the stack, the stack this week is about this big. The, the warrant officer of the school committee goes in and goes through the stack. So I went through the stack on Monday and Tuesday of this week. In the past, Jean has always been, had always been the warrant officer.
Mm-hmm.
The invoices are always available for any one of us to go in and look at prior to the meeting, um, on Wednesday. They're available, um, they were there, they were available on Monday. So that, I don't know how many pages, ten, twelve pages, represents a stack this high.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the warrant?
Yes.
And I probably should have asked yesterday, sorry.
That's all right.
Is that available for distribution before the meeting to just to the committee?
Uh, I don't know, it never has, but in my four years, but I don't, um.
Well, maybe, I'm sorry.
I, I, I don't know, I know that they wait until someone has gone through the invoices to, to generate that.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Mm-hmm.
In case there are questions or issues. So it would depend upon whenever that person can get there to do it, um. I don't, if it gets distributed in electronic or hard copy form, becomes a public document, but it doesn't matter 'cause it's, we're a municipality, is that correct? Although there is special education issues in there.
Right.
That have to maintain, like, there, there's tuition, there's tuition payments, um, to out-of-district places. There's, uh, transportation issues for, uh, transportation invoices for special education students and because our.
Is it by name in there?
No, it's not, it's not by name, but because it's so small, hypothetically, you could have one student at one, out-of-district, um, facility
No. Name, mhm.
and if that, and that facility is named, people could ascertain who that student is and you violate their, their confidentiality.
Okay.
Particularly our special educational format, but other things that, um, we get into, we have to redact quite a bit.
I guess to Craig's point.
Yeah.
To me, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
In order to.
Like, we should do.
Yeah.
Does it have to be unanimous?
No, it has to have a majority.
Okay, so I can refuse to sign it, right? 'Cause I don't, because there's one, there's one glaring, I mean, like, I, I don't, like, uh, there's a, there's a one-month legal bill that's gigantic and I just, I mean, I don't even know what it is.
Mm-hmm.
And like, I mean, that's, so, I don't have to sign it and it can still work, I mean, I, I don't.
But we voted on it, we typically vote on it at the beginning of the meeting, so.
We voted on it at the beginning of the meeting, so, um, we did and we all, we all approved it.
Oh. Oh, okay.
So if you'd like to just vote again, if you want us to vote again, we could do that.
Well, he didn't get a chance.
And I was actually gonna recommend that we put the warrant review at the end of the agenda and not at the beginning so that it can circulate across the table and prior to the vote.
Okay.
Um, going forward, um, we can, if you would.
If you send Jennifer that message, she'll move that on the agenda.
I guess, I mean, I, I, I feel like I'm being really difficult, I just, I guess I didn't understand fully what it was, so I would like to vote again,
No.
No, I'm.
Not at all.
'Cause I would like to actually change my vote, 'cause I don't know why one of these bills is so high and I didn't have a chance to see invoices and to vote on it seems kinda crazy to me, but I mean, and, and just vote for it, but I'm sure I'm being difficult, I just.
No, no, you're, no, you're not, you're not.
Trying to do the right thing here.
That was one of my concerns from the beginning and I've, I've actually voted not to sign the bill because of the same thing and I, I.
You abstained.
I abstained, right.
All right.
And the reason why is 'cause I never saw the bill. And then be, to be honest with you, I asked to see the bill and, and, and I was told that I couldn't see the bill.
No, they've been waiting for it.
That, that's not true, that, that's, that's not true.
Okay, I, I, I guess, okay, fine, maybe I misunderstood what I was asking you to say.
Every. Okay, okay, so let's just start from tonight forward regarding the warrant, okay?
Okay. Okay, yeah.
And we'll make it crystal clear that every invoice is available in the central office, in the business office for review by any one of the five of us.
Okay.
In a few moments, we will designate an official person who has to review the invoices every single time.
Okay.
But it's always available. And if there are any, ever any questions when you're reviewing an invoice, feel free to ask the superintendent or Michael McMillan, the director of, um, finance and operations at that point in time.
Okay.
By moving the, uh, approval of the warrant to the, to our section of the agenda after the superintendent's report, we'll give you a chance to go through it, I think, um, without being disrespectful and not listening to the presentations that are going on, it's kinda hard, but, you know, we can, some of us can, um, multitask, I am not one of them, but, um.
Sure, actually you can. I can also clarify where your concern is on, uh, the legal bill. I, I do wanna remind you that we did a new bus lease.
Right, so I can s- I can speak to it because I'm not gonna divulge anything that, uh, so, um, we, so, yes, Louise is correct. There, there's a negotiation of the bus lease that was just completed that we voted on at the last meeting. The district has had an extraordinary amount of Freedom of Information records requests, uh, from entities outside of the school district which require enormous amounts of printing, whether they're requesting emails related to a certain topic or, um, printing of emails, collecting of documents, and then having all of that, um, vetted and redacted by legal counsel in case of confidentiality. And, um, I can't, I, I can't tell you what portion of that number relates to that Freedom of Infor- Information request, but it was a significant portion because the tome is about this big that we saw.
What I can tell you is I had to physically deliver the, uh, Freedom of Information Act documents because the computer would not scan them into an email. And I had to put it on, I would, could not put it on a thumb drive, I had to put it on a disk.
And there was so many.
It broke the, yeah.
It broke the install, yeah, so the demands have been great.
Yes.
So I, I, so I, that, that's really helpful, so now I, I, I'm much more comfortable with that figure, having heard that, I, I get it, that's, that's helpful.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't need to change my vote.
No.
I, I, these are also, uh, you know, all, all signs, 'cause these are figures that weren't heard, you know, uh, previously, but, um, but, uh.
Yeah.
I would, I would recommend that you come and look at them.
I, I, I'm going to, we're moving forward and this is a growing pain, so I'm sorry for the sort of.
Yeah, go on, go on, yeah.
No, don't be sorry, don't be sorry at all.
No, no, no.
The hurdle that we just came to here, I just, I, I sort of don't, didn't understand what it was.
Yeah.
Um, but, but I do now and, and I will be looking at the invoices, but, you know, they've already been invoiced and, you know, we need to pay the thing, so.
Right.
Right, and, and, and so the invoices have, you know, have Michael McMillan's, uh, signature on them, they have the, the status of them,
It's a good question, right?
they have the cost center so that they're, they're recorded properly. I, um, prior to this week would always come at six thirty and grab the warrant and I would go through it and if I had questions about like, well, what is this and what is, and you learn pretty quickly once you start going through it what things are. And I would say, Michael, what is this, what is this, but.
Great point.
Yeah, so, um, without going through the stack, because I didn't need to see eight hundred invoices to answer two questions on the warrant. So it's always available at six thirty when we have seven o'clock for, for preview.
Okay. Good to know, thank you very much for indulging me.
Any, any time, don't ever apologize, please don't apologize, because you're gonna get there.
Sure. Sort of slow, retarding the cadence here, that's all.
No, 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 no.
Actually, that was a very good question and it's good to call to task for why something is, because it makes us look at it, but this is one of the two.
Thank you.
I'd rather have you ask questions and, than, um, wonder about something.
Thank you.
Well, I should have asked a question two and a half hours ago before I voted for it.
True, truthfully, but, but you didn't, you didn't know, you didn't know, so, um, okay, so next.
Maybe. Right, there you go.
Next we are on to, um, our subcommittee and liaison assignments for the twenty nineteen, well, actually, it's the balance of this year and into the next year. Um, so May of twenty nineteen to May of twenty twenty until next year's election, um, right?
Yes.
So, uh, subcommittees, uh, we've all kinda seen the write-up on what the subcommittees are. Um, we typically have two on a subcommittee, three would be a forum of the whole committee, so we tend not to do that. Um, and, um, we don't take nominations, we just kinda have a free, we just talk about it. And, um, I don't, I'll start the ball rolling, um, I would kinda like to stay on the three that I'm on. Uh, budget and finance, security and collective bargaining. Collective bargaining won't ramp up until fall of twenty twenty when we start, start talking with, uh, the, the teachers' union. We do the, the teachers' union first and then ESPs and, and on down the line. Um, I, on collective bargaining, okay, um.
Can I make a?
What, what else?
Did you say you wanna?
I, I have an interest in it, but I'm not extreme, I mean, if anyone else has an interest in it, please speak up.
There is no contract to be negotiated for the next two years.
Yeah. I'm interested.
So.
We just, we just, actually, you'll, you'll be voting on the last one, which is food service. The teachers are in their first year of a three-year, uh, secretaries are in their first year of three, bus drivers are not unionized, um, ESPs, the pairs are in their first year of three. We settled all contracts except the secretaries before they ended, so all contracts are, are settled.
Right.
Um, even administrative contracts are settled, so there's, sitting around looking at contracts just to read, midnight reading right now.
Yeah. Yeah.
The thing that, uh, I'd like to bring up is the last time, eh, before I got here, there was security and facilities was a subcommittee and, uh.
Oh, it was secu- safety and security.
No, it was facilities was on here as well, um, two thousand, if you go back to two thousand seventeen, eighteen, you'll see.
I think we got. As, as a s- as a subcommittee?
Yes, and I just think that has to be added on as well, because it's so important to, uh, because one of the things that we do do with states that we maintain, we're in charge of making sure that the schools are being maintained and, uh, in my opinion, that has to be, that would be something that I would love to serve on as a subcommittee to try to bring, to bring us, uh, into, into the two thousand, into the, in, into modernization of the sc- of the facilities. And I think it's just a very important part of the subcommittee, I mean, we have so much to work with, with some of the facilities here and there. You know, in my opinion, are at up to par versus other school districts.
So we have five subcommittees, um, I don't know whether you would roll security into facilities, um.
Or just put securities, just like budget and finance, we could do security in fi- in facilities and it'd be my pleasure to serve on that committee.
Um, I just don't, I'm always worried that when we have so many committees, it gets like.
Yeah, he's saying just, uh, expand, broaden the scope of what the security subcommittee does.
This, this one.
I think it makes sense, I mean, it's a valid, I mean, there, there's no subcommittee that addresses the facility and that the schools are buildings.
Well, well, it, facilities do come up in budget and finance considerably because we've worked the capital budget plan, um, with, uh, Michael and we. Well, it facilities do come up in budget and finance uh considerably, because we worked the capital budget plan um with uh Michael and we worked the the maintenance plan um with him in budget and finance, um.
Okay.
So so Paul, Paul, I'm I'm um um my only thought about wrapping it in with security is the fact that that tends to be an executive session and.
The facilities?
No, security, subcommittee meetings tend to be an executive session and and hypothetically, if we were to have a subcommittee meeting on security and facilities and we invited Brian Joyce and Mark Kelly and the and the facility team in for a meeting
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. Hmm.
and we also had the police here for the security part, it it gets kinda dicey in terms of the confidentiality needed in the security subcommittee meeting, so that's.
So is there any way we could do another subcommittee that just has facilities on it?
I could I just add that facility is a town entity, so it would have to be buildings.
Right, buildings, and we could write buildings.
'Cause if you're going to facilities, it's like going into town, you know. I thought there was a change in this because we have a new facility manager in the town, right? That's what that's why I thought we in that change was initiated, but I my memory might be wrong, I don't know.
We have a different context. Yeah, yes, yes, because because the the.
I I just think it's such a p- important role, especially looking at.
Well, what what if.
We come from buildings.
So but but Paul, to call out that, what if instead of budget and finance became finance and facilities? So at least it was top of mind and it was highlighted as something, yeah.
Yeah.
Good good suggestion.
So you're saying instead of budget, we we use facility and finance, that's a great idea, facility, that's a great idea.
We we just. Finance and faci- finance and facilities, okay, because as I stated, it's part and parcel of what of what we do anyway in budget and finance.
Finance and facilities.
That's a great idea.
Hand it here.
It is, right, 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 'cause we want we need to we need money to not only take care of the schools, but we also need money to uh yeah, it puts it all into, yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay. Okay, so um as Jen stated, there are five subcommittees and there's five of us and we need two, so kind of that puts, you know, two.
We need two on each?
Typically, yes.
So you said you wanna stay on the security one, I'll do security with you.
Okay.
I would love to stay on policy, I have a request though, um your I have we I can do afternoon meetings, I would typically the subcommittees have met like in the afternoon or during the morning and.
Yeah.
So it's just whoever would be interested in policy, maybe think about whether you can meet like the meeting time, like, 'cause I don't want another night meeting, I guess is what I'm saying.
I would be interested in it.
Can you meet in the afternoons?
Okay, so Ashley and Jennifer are on policy. Um so we policy done, collective bargaining is Ashley and Ellen. Security is Ellen and Craig. Superintendent evaluation, so the superintendent evaluation um is typically a four-meeting subcommittee. Uh they meet with the superintendent at the at the sometime in at late summer to start talking about the superintendent's goals for the year and um superintendent's tenant will massage them and get them committee-ready and maybe have another meeting with the subcommittee prior to presenting to the full committee and then uh the subcommittee will orchestrate a mid-season evaluation, typically in January or February and then they might meet with the superintendent again in the spring and then the superintendent gets evaluated in public in June and the subcommittee helps with that process with the superintendent, so it's not um.
I mean, I'm I'm.
It's not it's not heavy lifting from a time constraint.
I'm only doing one other, so I mean I'm happy to work with Dr. Sullivan on that one.
And me too, I'm more I'm willing to work, okay.
So it's like, m- securities.
Wait a second, okay, superintendent evaluation.
Happy, all comes, that's nice.
So Craig and Paul.
We all really wanna be on it.
I I'm just I'm just I'm just I'm not for me, I'm just kidding.
Is is a little twinkle in your eye when you say it, it's like.
I I I'm only doing security with you, so I I feel like it was.
Okay, um.
Yeah.
So that leaves, should I to finance and facilities then?
You can do that with me, Jim.
Well, I kinda wanted to stay on it only because um I like numbers.
Yeah, and we do all.
Well, and and honestly, it's a lot of independent work, um that it it's not, we don't currently function with Michael, like, okay, Michael, you do this and run this analysis for me, I wanna see it. We kinda roll our sleeves up and and work with him uh collaboratively, um and hence my six AM on Sunday morning emails, um.
Six A M.
So I'm 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 happy, other than security, I'm happy to do whatever you want me to do, I don't I don't have any particular.
So. Well, who has an affinity for numbers, like who's.
Yeah, who's a good budget person.
I'm definitely not me.
Well, Paul's on this, right, you and Paul are on this, 'cause we changed to to finance and facilities.
Yeah, I'm pretty good with numbers.
Okay.
I do run a small business, we can employ a hundred people.
Okay.
Can you meet in the morning now?
Can can you meet in the mornings, Paul?
Uh yeah, I can meet in the mornings.
Are you? Okay.
We do.
Are you good with Excel? Sprite sheets?
Uh good, ooh, I can figure it out, I usually have people do it for me, I'm not gonna want.
Yeah, you can't have people do it for you, 'cause this is school business.
I know that, I I get that, well, who else didn't, I mean, I did I'm more interested in the facilities than the budgets, but I'll do both, but I I gotta admit, I'm not really, I can learn, I'm not.
All right.
We could do another subcommittee since collective bargaining is gonna be light this year.
Yeah, yeah, so why don't we do that and and uh and and just do budget and finance on one and just do this.
We do need collective bargaining now, because there are things that come up.
There are things that come up, yeah, so no, so Paul, we'll stay finance and facilities, um and we'll we'll see how it goes, we'll give it a shot, right, we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, but if I'm not if I'm not good at good at that, I don't wanna I don't wanna burden you with all, I mean, you've been you've been burdened enough.
Um.
Is there any.
I'm willing to give it a shot if you are, Ellen.
Ashley, do you know um that?
I I have like less than no interest in being on a finance committee right now, I can't take that on right now, so maybe next year.
Well, if it says. If it says facilities on it, I'm interested.
I I think we stay with.
You'll always know where you stand with me.
I think we stay with our strategy, finance and facilities.
Yeah, I I'd be I'd be ple- I'd be pleased to do that with you, absolutely, if I'm gonna be here in the morning and and because it is hand in hand, if you're gonna fix the facilities, you need the money to do it.
All right, so why don't. Okay, so.
Right.
So I and and just I think there's money available out there that um that's coming off from the acco- from the renovations from fifteen years ago that we can talk about.
Oh. Yeah. Well, yeah, we can we can talk about it, but um uh okay.
'Cause I think I think the school needs a lot of work, but and I'd like to.
So.
So, one thing that is in place in these meetings is that because the budget is really one of the biggest things that we do, it requires, it's yeoman's work, it's a ton of work.
Well, so why don't we put more people on that, why is it only up to you?
Um. No, no, we can't, because that's deliberation.
Okay, I'll put two.
Make it well.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But but what we typically have done is we posted as sub of the whole, so you can attend the meeting, you typically don't comment, do you?
No, so every subcommittee meeting that gets posted, everyone can go to, if a subcommittee meeting gets posted as of the whole committee, you can go to it and you can participate. If it's not posted of the whole committee, you can attend and observe and listen, but you can't participate, that's the difference, but I I think we've made it a practice, with the exception of collective bargaining, that all of our meetings are posted as of the whole, so you.
Okay, so we have the option of going down to the subcommittee meetings we really want to.
You always. Yep.
The public meetings, anybody can go.
Okay.
They're. They're public meetings.
So you won't be seeing it at the budget.
So security is posted as executive session, um most typically, s but committee members can go, it's posted as as executive session, uh so the public can't go and the the young man tonight reminded me, one of our first security meetings, I didn't post it as executive session and we had a boy scout come in for community s community service for his badge and he came to a security subcommittee meeting and we were talking with the police about threat assessments, I'm like, oh, sorry, you know, but um he came to another meeting, I signed his piece of paper, um.
Yeah. So we're all welcome, like, if you guys have a security meeting in in an executive session, am I welcome to go to that?
You always happen.
Okay.
So that leaves me on security, 'cause Ellen, you've got two committees here, collective bargaining and finance.
Okay, you're you're on security.
I was gonna stay, I was gonna stay on security.
I think you should.
Craig, you said you were.
Oh, only 'cause I've kinda like seen it through and we're kinda in the middle of the next thing and.
Yeah. No.
What?
So, no, he was gonna be on security with you, yeah, so it's you.
Yeah, that's fine.
So Craig and Ellen.
Craig and Ellen, that's what I'm saying, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so policy and standards, Ashley and Jennifer, superintendent evaluation, Craig and Paul, collective bargaining, Ashley and Ellen.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Finance and facilities, and Ellen and Paul, and security, Ellen and Craig.
Good.
Perfect.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, good, um. The next, the liaison assignments, and when I was um providing Ashley and Craig with their materials that we owe them in from our protocols, kinda came up liaison is kind of uh not an all-encompassing term uh merely for the fact that we don't have a safe schools committee on here and maybe this is liaison and appointee or something, we decided we talked about maybe changing the title here.
Representative.
Liaison representative assignments, um. So.
We're adding safe schools, ready?
Yes, yes, so we'll just go down the list, school council, um each school council meets by law once a month, uh charged with a review of the student handbook, um and the school and developing the school improvement plan for the following year and they come and they report out on performance against the previous year's school improvement plan and they present next year's school improvement plan, um and Jennifer has been the rep to Ausgood, Barbara was the rep to Deer Hill, and I have been the rep to the middle high school, we'll need to add middle school, 'cause it well, they will have a separate school council.
Yeah. We have. They will have a separate school council.
So there'll be four.
Right.
I I'd like to take on that, just 'cause I I got kids in middle school, I think I have a good perspective.
You wanna go? So Paul wants to be for the middle school?
Yeah, you can be the one, of course you can.
Yeah.
I'll shift to Deer Hill.
Actually, you were me wanting to do Ausgood. You're a young Ausgood.
I'm I'm Ausgood.
You can no longer be on the school council as a parent.
Right, how about if I did high school then?
Oh no, you can be the liaison.
You can be the liaison.
You just can't be.
No, I don't, but I don't really want to.
No, um well, that leaves Craig, do you wanna do Ausgood school council?
No, it's for.
Well, with that ringing endorsement.
You're gonna be great, Craig.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
That's my daughter's school and I love it, so I yeah, I will do it.
There you go, okay, and Ashley, you wanna do the high school?
Yeah. Awesome school.
Yes, please.
Okay.
It's awesome, Ashley's child school, so I'm wondering.
So.
I say, you need to do Dell.
I mean, just because I've been on it already for two years, I feel like it would be beneficial for me to experience other schools and I don't know about the district other than the Ausgood yet, so I would like to learn more about other schools.
Sure.
Yeah, we have to. Right.
I think you'd love it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I really you love baseball.
That's great.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that, yeah.
Just to see.
It's a great group.
Given our discussions about things, I think you you wanna see future student.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Good.
Um they meet the third Tuesday, they're very regimented, the third Tuesday of every month, um at two thirty.
Talk.
Okay.
Uh we.
Be talking Tuesday or something?
We have um.
When when is it two thirty, when?
The that's the high school, I don't know what all the other schools.
Oh, the middle school, okay.
So you don't you won't know yet, Paul, until the prin- the principal will establish it and.
Okay. Right, once you get all that covered.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah, but but they're always our our policy requires that they are held after school hours, so Ausgood will be after the close, uh all three building, all four buildings will be after the s- the close of business, um.
Okay. Just can't be out Tuesday, yes.
So uh.
Which you'll ha- if you need to shift, we can shift, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, no, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine, I'll be fine, please, we got.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
We typically have a school committee member go to the leadership meeting of the P S O, um just as a representation to hear what they're doing, um any any one of us and all of us are uh eligible to go to any P S O meeting we wanna go to, um these typically happen during the morning, the leadership, P S O leadership meetings, so that knocks me out.
Mm-hmm.
It knocks me out.
It sometimes knocks me out, depending whether I'm cordoned on, but.
What if we can share that?
It's okay to some, you don't have to like, some is, yes, we do share, we do share, so.
Can I share it?
Great.
Okay, I'll share with them.
Yes. I don't think, there is not always someone present at the P S O president's meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
But I I think if the P S O big president, 'cause there's a each school has a president and then there there's one that runs a super president.
Mm-hmm.
The grand cooba.
Right.
The grand, the grand.
And that's getting them, everything's new by the way, they're not doing it.
And and so once that brand president knows you guys are the liaisons, you can coordinate, like, anything I need to to hear, anything you need to hear from us this meeting, you know, so you don't always have to go.
Any percent.
Right.
Sounds like.
Give them the.
Yeah. Alright, Paul and Craig.
Yeah, in full disclosure, my wife will be the liaison for the middle school and the P S O.
Paul and Craig.
Okay, you're in the know.
I'm in the know.
Um elder affairs, um this, I I don't know, this, they meet Mondays at eight AM.
Monday, Mondays at eight AM.
And I think, I think it's Monday.
Monday or every Monday.
I honestly, I don't know.
I think it's every Monday.
I I wanna do that, I'll do that.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
Alright, yeah, uh uh most of my members are seniors, I'm I'm pretty good with seniors, so and we wanna get them to come to some of these games.
Okay.
I'd love to stay on CPAC, but I would love to have a partner, 'cause I can't make the morning meetings, but I do try to go to the evening presentations.
Go. Okay.
So if anybody can go in the morning, pretty good, I'll stay on that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, Kelly McGee is.
What are the morning times? Is it like ten or is it like eight?
I think it's like nine, ten. I think it's nine or nine thirty, I think it's nine thirty.
It's and it's not very often.
There are a lot of these things.
I know, I just feel like I don't wanna.
Yeah.
This is quite quite a quite a schedule, do you do you two have to go to all of these?
Oh, no, we just get their reports.
Oh.
Not to the summer? Yeah.
So I actually, the superintendent attends the P S O president's council and and I usually give an update to them and they share with me, that's why I know that they're mostly.
Okay. Okay.
Jim, I would be I I would be gr- grateful and it would be a pleasure for me to help you with that.
The CPAC, that means the morning, I'm not being trying to make the evening.
Yeah. Right, I've been to before. Yeah, I can go to the mornings.
So can we just backtrack for one second, 'cause I had I had a thought about elder affairs, Paul, um and
Okay.
I'm I'm wondering, because over the years, Louise, you know, we hear they wanna be involved and they they want they want everyone to go to them at the senior center, what if we kind of flipped it and had them come to us or come see Paul or 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 I I I don't know, try try to try to flip it a little bit and and have them come here and say, well, what is it that, you know, what is the interaction you want with the schools, I I don't know.
I think that if you want my input, I think that um elder affairs, emergency management, uh and possibly Safe Harbor could come to the school committee and report out. Because it's a very active Safe Harbor coalition, we we do talk about them a great deal and uh I've been talking to Chris as well uh about um
Yeah.
having a student sit in on the school committee along with another student, just to report out and keep us as we've had in the past.
Yeah, well, I was gonna I was gonna get get to that, so but actually, I think that's a good idea, what if what if we, I mean, Paul, unless you're dying to go to elder affairs like every other Monday at eight AM
But. But.
um what what if what if we just make it a point to reach out to them and have them come, have Paul Kears come to us and give us a state of the elder affairs of town and how they see, y- you know, like, we get reports from other outside interests.
Right.
Yeah, that's great.
And that might be a good time to have the con- discussion about where is the senior pass, you know, the grand skipper passes that are not going out, what is the issue, so they can bring the issues to you.
Yeah.
Okay, so so let's cross that one on.
Right. So you're saying like, just invite them in to participate and see how and get them engaged.
We'll 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 put it, yeah.
I'd put it on your to-do list in a agenda items meeting.
An agenda item.
A couple times a year, yeah.
Yeah, like e- like either Patrick or I are together, we'll reach out to Paul Kears, who's the chair, but I elder affairs, right?
Well.
Yeah.
I think you can do that with Safe Harbor CEO and emergency.
The the. Yeah, I sense there must be numerous ones we could do that with, right?
Yeah, but yeah, but let's just, 'cause I have to think, I I have to think progressively, 'cause I have other comments, okay, what were you gonna say?
Can I talk? I'm sorry. I have a comment, so the idea of these liaison assignments was to sort of reach out and be in the community, be a voice in the community, hear what people had to say
Yeah.
and that's how we really developed a strong relationship with Safe Harbors, when Safe Harbors was just forming, you know, it was a different story, so the point of this is to is to sort of be a good community member and have the schools be working at as a whole, like, the the A E S, the alternative energy committee has been a nice committee to go visit and it's just, that's the point. I feel like we have a strong relationship with Safe Harbor and that came out of us initiating these liaisons.
Yeah, I I've I was not gonna advocate to abandon that one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, no, I know Lu- Louise had mentioned it, so elder affairs, we have. Yeah, no, no, I know Lu Louise had mentioned it. So elder affairs, we have a plan for it. Special Ed, uh, C P A C, we have Paul and we have Jen. Media, by nature of our own operating protocols, the chair is really the contact, uh, the point of contact for the media. I don't think it needs to be a liaison.
Well, you.
And and until we until we get someone starting to come to the meetings, um, from the Mariner, I believe they've hired someone, I'm not sure, um. I don't know if it if if it belongs on this list as a liaison assignment.
I I well, there's a couple things to that. When we say media, it would it shouldn't just be, uh, the Patriot Ledger. I think there's the like, to get people to actually come to the meetings, which we've been trying to do. I think a lot of it could be like advertising town to come to the meetings. I think that, uh, that that's pretty much behind it. Should be like the media to say, hey, come up, maybe it's maybe it's posting on Cohasset one four three.
It's like a PR.
The, um, just the agenda. I know Kevin McCarthy does that on the Board of Selectmen. He just he posts the agenda. So is media just considered the Patriot Ledger or is it considered social media as well to get some of the messaging out there? Because I think it it isn't, it's it needs to be defined, what is media? And and I think that could be to a lot of points about how do we get some of the messaging for how to get kids to sign up or. Cause that media is very important.
But that.
But that's like a school.
It's just a it's just a point person, point of contact for the media, right? Isn't that what it is?
Yeah. Well, well, Paul, I think you're talking about two, I hear what you're saying, but you're talking about two different things.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I think I think that the media is, it's when Joanna Salz from the Globe or who or Joe DeFazio from the Ledger or I think the guy's name is Michael coming in from the Mariner calls and says, oh, what is the school committee's position on this?
Yeah.
Or what do you think about this? And that our protocol indicates that, you know, we speak as one voice. So so the best part, the way to get that accomplished is to have the chair be the point of contact.
I agree.
So if Joanna Salz were to call you, Craig, and say, well, what did you think about that? Well, I'd really like to refer you to the chair of the committee at this point in time.
I'm not talking to the media for any reason.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that that as the example, that that's the way those inquiries should be handled, okay?
Yeah. Yes, I agree.
The second thing, Paul, I think we could incorporate into our goals in terms of, I I'm one thousand percent with you. How do we get how do we get people here? Uh, we get people here when there's a crisis, but how do we get people here to celebrate with the staff and the administration, all of the the wonderful things that are happening? And maybe we put that on one of our goals.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I think posting our agenda on one four three, I'll take that on. I'll do that.
Okay, okay, cause people have asked me, because I've gone on there and said, hey, why isn't anybody going to these meetings? And they're saying, no one votes.
Um, and.
Well, they're always posted on the town website, you know.
Yeah, it gets posted on our website, it gets posted on the town website. And and the answer, Paul, also is on the town website. You can sign up for alerts. So if people are really interested, um, you go to the homepage for the town and I think it's a notify me button and you can pick whatever committees you want to be notified on.
Wow. And they'll tell you when you come out.
And and it's presented. I got one today for, um, for the selectmen. I mean, you get the and you get them when they post their minutes and you get them when they post their meetings.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, great. Cool.
So if people ask you like, cause I I know how hard you don't you're not thinking on once a night at seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Right.
One thought, a a quick thought. Um, I I know that just from a previous experience that as we have spotlights on educate education.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know there might be some recording, um, restrictions, but where where I came from, we did, um, certain school committee meetings at the schools.
Yeah.
And it was it had a, um, a great purpose of kind of lighting up that school around a educator spotlight.
Mm-hmm.
So the school come together, kids were presenting. It would it really it really brought a different.
Sounds awesome.
That's great.
And you just we and we just rotated them. We had, uh, every school picked a month and we did, you know, four throughout the year where it was a great spotlight and.
Love that.
We're going on the road.
I mean, you should I know there's some that you wanna have it.
Some logistic, though, yeah.
But I think we.
Yeah.
Logistically, you'll have to do that, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, even the words.
They get them from us.
I I think I think you can, I think we can figure out the logistical camera things.
I think you can do that.
The word incentives really is.
No, I just I I'm just suggesting, we just.
It's a great ship. I wanna do it.
Well.
Yeah.
It's awesome to me.
Yeah, and I know the studio ha has, uh, you know, mobile cameras.
Yeah, they filmed.
So even if we don't have have the have the ability to broadcast live, actually, they do because.
They.
They do.
They.
I know we have pixel. The the mobile cameras can broadcast broadcast live?
We can do that. I think so through.
Okay.
Right, well, I think they do that, I think.
I mean, it's great. It's a it'd be a great touch, I think.
Yeah. Yeah.
It is.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so so that's media. We're in agreement. We're gonna take that off the list. And Paul, we'll we'll look at, now we ha also have to be cognizant of the promotion and exposure that the schools provide for all of the positive accomplishments. We don't want to step on feet or send out a message that's not in complete harmony with a school message. Correct?
Mm, okay.
Um, legislative liaison, this has been on here since I started coming to meetings eleven years ago and I have no idea what this person does.
I.
I don't think.
Why don't you let me be that person and see if I can.
What is.
Legislative.
I'd like to do it with you. I'd like to, I think we know enough people.
Okay.
I think that's when you get the senator in rep here.
Yeah.
You're a great person.
Rep here.
Yeah, I mean, I know I I know O'Connor, Senator O'Connor, I know John Stinchcomb, so like I'd like to serve up to him, that everything.
Oh, yeah, you're you're.
Okay, cool. Awesome. Cool. Let's do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But so.
Great, done.
We could, um. Huh? No, no, no. So all I all I'm asking, because I have I have no idea of of what of what this would entail and I I I think cause we don't have.
So I'm done.
Well. Well, I think that it's like, so last year I went to my Colobby Day at the State House, right? So I was there as just a person from the district.
Yeah. Yeah.
But if I were there as a school committee member, that might be different.
Yeah.
And I was in O'Connor's office asking him why my, you know, transportation's level funded forever and.
It's to keep up with the legislative ideas that deal with education.
Yeah, yeah. So there are other opportunities like that that pop up throughout the year that it would would be valuable for us to have a presence in.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. Awesome.
Yeah.
Done. Safe Harbor.
Um, Sa Safe Harbor. So, um, Louise, I'm gonna I'm gonna I'm gonna, um, diff. Dip differ differ differ, not defer. I'm gonna differ from you. I I think.
Differ.
But you don't have to, but you have somebody who's on the ch on the steering committee.
I'm on the steering committee for Safe Harbor.
Right, right. And you've always gone to, I mean, we've always had very good school representation at these meetings and I I think it's important
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
that the policymaking body of the schools is represented.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Um, and it's they meet once a month. Um, they're typically an hour, hour and a half.
The the coalition meetings?
The coalition, yeah, this is the Safe Harbor Coalition meetings, not the steering committee meetings.
Right.
These are the ones that are in here with, um.
Yep, those are the those are the names.
Nicole, yeah.
Nicole and Chris.
Right.
So. Um.
I'm happy to be the representative if you have to.
So you gotta stay on it?
You.
I usually, I try to go.
You try to go? Now you have to go.
Anyway.
Well, I wanna, Ashley.
I don't have to go, right? I can like tell them I I'm ready.
I wanna add a diversity committee to this. Are you, are you?
Do you? Cause it was me and Charlie looking at each other yesterday.
All right, all right. We'll just stay on this one. So what you kinda you ki.
Yes. Yeah, no, I would like to be the person, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
On the Safe Harbor?
I will go.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right.
I'll just have fun.
C E F, Jen.
This is a really nice.
I'll stay on C E F. Okay, I don't feel like.
This is really great.
Okay.
Yeah, it's very smart.
Okay, Jen's staying on C E F. Emergency management is one meeting a year. Um, I I don't. It's it's in the bunker, it's your goal.
I like that job description. I'll volunteer for it.
You wanna do it, Craig?
Sure.
It's in the bunker.
Yeah.
The bunker.
That's pretty cool down there. You'll see it, like suns down there with the Boy Scouts. They have a little. The eye route down there, yeah. That's where they hang out.
Right.
We have a actually.
I've only been at the drawer of the bunker. I'm actually.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. You know.
There there hasn't been either.
What about these places here?
Yeah, you'll love it. They got.
There is one coming up, I believe. I don't know if it was one in the.
It's well set up.
You set up for you.
TVs, everything.
Okay. All right, let's keep going. Uh, Hall of Fame, this is an every other year thing. This is the Cohasset High School, um, Athletic Hall of Fame. It's a liaison non-voting position and it's just informative and I like to read the resumes, cause sometimes I can remember people. Um, but I was one of the founding members of the Hall of Fame Committee. I've been on it forever. Um, I'm happy to stay on it or not.
Sounds sounds great today. Sounds great. Warrant review.
It's great to help, yeah.
Warrant review, um.
I think you should, uh, who's good with numbers?
Um, I will be coming in every 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 week anyway to look at it, just, um. Cause I I don't know, is chair or kind of is has it always been the chair?
I think it's usually. It has been the chair.
Yeah.
In the in my recollection, it's been the chair.
Okay, um. I'll I'll be the official person that has to look at it, but just is every everyone is clear?
Six thirty, every, yeah.
Everyone is clear that they're open and the the art, the, um, invoices are eligible for everybody to look at. Okay, the post-employment benefit committee, um, Barbara's actually the alternate on this. So the this started out as O P E B. And now this is a town committee that has put forth a proposal to the Board of Selectmen on how to mitigate the ever-growing, uh, post-employment benefits for retired municipal workers in the town of Cohasset, which is approaching forty-two million, Tracy, is that about right? And, um, the so they're done with their work in terms of the proposal and all the research, their next phase will, after the Board of Selectmen think, you know, mull it over. I mean, they, the Board of Selectmen, um, they didn't vote on that, did they? No, they didn't vote on it. So it's gonna be important and, um, I did not go to every meeting, but I went to enough of them to be informed. Um, I would suggest that the collective bargaining subcommittee, well, Ashley, you and I should probably be on this or be alternates.
Okay.
Um, because the impact their recommendations will have will be on the contract. Um, internal scholarship, this is, um, a once a year meeting, um.
That's coming up next one.
Yeah, I'm going to it, um, next next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
The class night, the senior night, which is the Thursday night before graduation.
Right.
Um, is when all of the local scholarships are given out and everything from the Rotary Club to the, um, Veterans of Foreign Wars to Farmer's Market, there's, um, three typed pages of scholarships. And the last time I went was they gave out over a hundred thousand dollars in scholarship. Most of those groups pick their award winners, but there's a handful of internal scholarships that the administrative staff, um, select and based on application and or merit and, um, a school committee person goes. So I'll go this year. Next year, we can decide who who wants to go. Um, A E C.
So now I'm, you know, I I I like going to the meetings, but I'm a little confused, cause they reconfigured. And I don't know how that impacts their, so I can find out. I think I need to research that.
So we can just leave Jen on that because we don't need to.
Okay.
Um, long-range planning group, um, this has not met in over a year. There's some, this is, uh, two from the Board of Selectmen, two from advisory, two from capital, two from school committee, the town manager, the superintendent, the business manager or director of finance and operations. Um, and it's for long-range planning for the town. Um, it it ties in, uh, from fiscal policy and, uh, meeting benchmarks for deposits into stabilization funds uh, in order to keep the triple A bond rating as well as long-term capital needs.
It convenes the meeting.
Um.
The last time there were three people.
Yeah, and I was one of them in the audience.
How often is that?
They're supposed to meet.
Uh, once a month.
They're supposed to meet monthly. Um, and there's been a little bit of chatter about re re, um, revitalizing this. I would say let's just put this on hold. And if they come back and say we're gonna rebook this, we can discuss who wants to be on it. Um, something we need to add or Safe Schools Committee? Craig.
That's that's me. I I'm jumping at that.
Yeah, and I'd like to continue on.
Okay, so Craig and Paul.
Should we have, uh.
Cause it's just so much fun to hang out with that.
We have our next our next meeting is June sixth and that's to determine really what it's gonna look like going forward next year.
Okay.
But that's gonna continue.
Did we forget about the, uh, very important Cohasset Education Foundation?
No, that's the C, yeah.
Um, that's Jen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I go to those too a lot, so I'll see you.
So do you wanna put your name as well?
Yeah, I'd go there with you. I mean, I I'm I'm at them anyways, so I go to every.
I I actually, I I can't make many of the meetings, so if you wanna join that one, that's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that would, yeah.
June sixth, that'll be back later, D D.
D day.
Yeah, in the, yeah, it wasn't intentional, in the, um, learning commons upstairs.
And we, Jen, you add diversity.
Alright, okay.
I'll say it's a lot of fun. I'm just glad to meet all the T T's.
What you can add to the.
I should do that this way.
I would like to, yeah, but now would you like to be the liaison or would you like?
Yeah.
I I might have, I'm.
Are you are you serving as a honor role on that committee?
I mean, I can't really, I I'm gonna have to figure out all this.
I mean, I can, I would love to do that, so I can put my name and then we can sort it out.
Okay, great, perfect. Great.
Okay.
What's that? I'm sorry.
Diversity Committee.
Oh, okay.
Jen Madden. Okay, so, um.
Has the wellness committee been voted with this in the schools? Yes, it has.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wellness committee.
Okay, so, um.
You see, there's a last this. I'm not using this light, so.
Oh, I know. Part of it's my fault.
No.
No, it's it's fine, it's fine. Um, okay, so does anyone need to review this or is everyone clear?
Clear.
Okay.
Clear.
Clear.
All right, I will get this to Jennifer and we will have anyone posted. Future school committee meeting dates, we have the rest of this, um. Well, we have June as left in this fiscal year, June fifth and June nineteenth. Um, and probably, I don't recall Louise, if at this meeting we set next year's calendar?
At the, I think s I think that was a meeting with the superintendent, then the calendars, so.
No.
Oh, no, you do set your calendar.
At this.
Next, I think it's next time.
At the next meeting. So at our June fifth meeting, everyone bring their year-long calendar and we will set our dates. For, I mean, typically, it's the first and the third Wednesday of every single month, uh, but there are vacation weeks.
There are also the M A S C conference too, and those kinds of things.
Yeah.
So we might not be the nineteenth?
No, no, we're definitely, we're gonna be the fifth and then we're gonna be the nineteenth, definitely for sure, committed.
No, I'd be at a meeting, what is, that's in that book, my policy thing that I haven't done yet.
Yeah, so if you if you can't physically attend a meeting, um, but you can participate remotely.
I can call in. Right.
Um. You can you can call in and you don't have a speakerphone in here, so you'd call in on like my cell phone or something. And, um, we have to acknowledge that you're participating remotely via telephone or via Skype or whatever form you're doing it. And then I believe that every vote needs to be a roll call vote because it needs to be recorded as such. And Tracy's nodding, she knows.
Yes, yeah.
Did, yeah.
Okay.
I'm I'm not gonna be here on the nineteenth.
Okay.
Is it? S is it like inconvenient for me to call in or is it, do you know what I mean?
It's n it's not inconvenient for you to call in. Um, I it it's, uh, you're at a disadvantage, cause you can't
Right.
see any presentations. Um, I think it's challenging to participate in the conversation, so, um, just because you're remote.
Right, right.
My personal feeling is something.
And as long as the other members are here, there's a quorum and it's.
As long as three are here, there's a quorum, yeah.
Okay.
I guess if you had any questions on any of these issues on the agenda, that you might be able to share that question with one of us to ask, could that be a priority?
Well, so if she calls in, she can ask a question herself.
I can tell you.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the last of school. That's the last of school. Yeah, right, we're fine.
June thirteenth.
We should, what we typically do is set up a workshop in the summer. I find that very, very helpful.
Yeah, I need.
Um, so we'll have to bring our summer calendars and if people are busy and.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, so so June fifth, that's what I'm saying, June fifth.
Yeah.
We are gonna set the schedule for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Yeah, so so whatever this is, it's gonna it's gonna be set for for next year, so everyone bring bring your, um, and and we don't veer from this. So you can you can plan your life. We don't veer from this schedule.
Okay.
Um.
Thank you.
Set your life around that schedule.
Yeah.
No, no, you no, you do. I mean, you're an elected official and and you've made a commitment, so you kinda have to be here.
No, she's doing.
Yeah.
Um, okay. So next, um, reading of policy K F R, community use of school facilities. Um, this is our second or our third read. And we received an updated one today at the table when you came in, cause we had a title change. And it's called Regulations Governing the Use of School Facilities, is the is the one that we're going to, um, vote on.
I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, we have.
I I I to, um, like, put those.
To I I to um include those.
You don't include them in the motion. We let let's just let's discuss any um corrections or changes. So Jen?
Okay, so we're gonna change uh number five. Since we don't really have a facilities manager, we're gonna change that to director of finance and operations.
Louise, is that correct? No lighting equipment, wiring, or projection equipment will be utilized without the approval of the facilities manager?
Yeah, of course.
I don't understand that. It's re- it's really
Lighting. Facilities manager or administrator? Sorry, I was trying to, I was trying to do two things.
Sorry, sorry.
I, you know what, we talked about this. I think we
Yes. I think it's my, I think it has to be Michael, not, we don't have a facilities manager.
Yeah. Uh the director of finance or his designate.
Or his designate.
Yeah.
Okay. Because it can be, it could be uh whoever is in charge of the food truck here. So I would put his designate.
Okay.
Or his, or his director.
Okay.
Their designate? Can we change and it become a woman?
Yeah.
His or her.
There?
Their designate.
No, I could, then it doesn't, it's not, um it should, there shouldn't be a permanent, it should be the director of finance operations.
How about your designate?
Or designate.
Or designate.
Or designate.
He usually is not a gender.
Okay. Okay. Um that was the only change I noted.
Oh, and the school department on the school committee on number twenty-two.
Oh.
The school department and school committee.
Have full authority. Only 'cause that is uh consistent with policy K F. Okay. Yes, so so can I, have a motion to approve uh policy K F R as amended, regulations governing the use of school facilities?
So moved.
Do I have a second, Ashley? All in favor? Aye?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
That's four oh, Craig.
Yeah, he's giving the best.
Craig stepped out. Okay, next is uh approval of minutes. Um
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Uh next is reports from subcommittee or liaisons. Um I don't think uh Jen just did the policy. Um I would just like to note for everyone that the Cohasset Master Plan is having their last public forum on the Town's Master Plan Saturday, the eighteenth, at ten A M. at uh Wilco Commons. Um and it's really the future of Cohasset, is what they've come up with. And I have nothing, ten A M., yeah. It's open to the public. Yeah. Any other reports?
Um that's been slow. I'm wondering, I'm wondering. We did have an Ausgood School Council meeting.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
Um uh Jen's reporting on the Ausgood School Council.
I do, I I wasn't able to make it to the entire meeting, but Lisa went over her school, over the plan.
Okay.
One of the things that I um I took note of is that responsive classrooms been six of the faculty members have been trained in responsive classroom. And she's hoping to train nine more this summer. But that they are my my takeaway from the meeting is that they're trying to implement some elements of responsive classroom in the other classrooms in the Ausgood, but that they, by they, I mean responsive classroom, do not have a train the trainer option. And so we're relying on um teachers to take time out of their summer to go to this apparently very expensive training. And so to me, it was a little, it it was just interesting that there are like a small number of people trained in this social-emotional
Yeah.
program in a larger student body.
So like I can
It's very expensive.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So the the um Ausgood had a a f- the full staff had an overview of it.
Yeah.
Um and then we sent six members over the summer. Um responsive classroom has a very restrictive uh training model that they will not come in unless you do three full days, which um in their minds are eight thirty to eight to three, which is problematic for us because we don't have three full professional development days during the year to to do that. They also have a restriction on the amount of people that they'll train. They'll only train thirty or under and we have over thirty staff members. So that leaves us with the option of paying for uh staff professional development in the summers. So we're we're committed to doing that. And we, even though they don't have a train the trainer model, we're we're doing some of that because that's that's what we do when we have a program we wanna implement uh with fidelity. And um we, Principal Farrell and I have a meeting coming up to talk about how we can best facilitate uh responsive classroom at the at the Ausgood as we do with fidelity. And you need to have that morning meeting every morning or be doing it. And Deer Hill is doing a similar thing. Um to to send nine folks over the summer from one school to a lot.
Right.
So this is gonna be something that happens over a multiple year period, um to have the staff trained and kind of a plan to do that.
It's a conundrum because we can't require staff to attend to anything in the summer.
Right. Right.
It's an expensive workshop. And if we wanted to implement it with fidelity, uh this would be extreme value.
So that was the only thing that I took note of for this session.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, she said they were gonna review the math.
Yes, we have a math program review uh that's already set for the summer. And um some very exciting math specialists. I went to a uh I went to a math um coordinator meeting in the whole South Shore. And the subject was program implementation, program um choosing what what they went through to look at, the data they they have for their math programs, and then how they went about. In some cases, just re-upping what they were doing, in other cases, adopting a new program. So that's that's part of our curriculum review. So we're doing that this summer. And uh so that I'm sure that's why I came up. We're studying. We're gonna hopefully gonna be trialing some some math. And we're gonna get a parent on the committees as well. It's important to us. Uh so we will have a parent from Ausgood, a parent from Deer Hill on this committee this summer. Along with a teacher from Amityville and a math specialist.
Thank you.
And anyone else? Subcommittee or liaison or? Okay. Um so now we're gonna do the approval of the minutes. Um we have two sets of minutes from the same meeting, I believe. Um from May first. The first is the meeting minutes for the public hearing on school choice. Does any, anyone have any comments? Or corrections? No? Um so Ashley and Craig, you would abstain from the vote?
I don't.
School choice, so can I have a motion to approve?
I, Paul, I'm sorry. M uh so motion.
Paul, are you made motion second?
Uh second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And to abstain, motion to approve minutes of of May second, the regular, of May first, the regular school committee meeting, unless there are comments. Um I actually do not have any comments on this minute.
I didn't either.
Good job, Tracy. Um so can I have a motion to approve the minutes of of Wednesday, May first?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And to abstain. Okay, great. Um follow-up and updates? Jen, sounds like we're gonna regurgitate that process?
Yeah, I think we, I think we should. I think we got off track and and I think it's a good thing.
Awesome. Okay. Yeah, okay. Um there's no topics reasonably anticipated. Um and so now I would like to uh have a motion to enter executive session for strategy number three, disc- uh discuss uh strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the C T A. Number two, negotiations on new personnel. And we do have number four, uh strategy related to security, um safety and security, the deployment of devices and personnel, or anything related thereof. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Um all in favor? Roll call, please.
All right, Paul, can you?
Aye, Craig.
Aye, Ashley, please. Aye, Ellen Marr.
Aye, Jen Madden. Can I just-